Meeting, call the order please. Please join me in prayers. Dear God, today as this session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted this day the wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessing on all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Please join me in allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
...pantry in Lowell. He was a communicant of Immaculate Conception Church in Lowell. Jerry was a former member of Mount Pleasant Golf Club and volunteered at bingo at St. John's Evangelist Church in Nauchemsfed. Jerry was the epitome of what a true family man should be. Besides his wife Mickey, he is survived by his two daughters Julie Hoffman and Jennifer Machado and her husband Sean Machado. His beloved four grandchildren Kaylee Dunham, Aiden Hoffman, Maya and Ella Machado. He was the brother of the late Roger Francis and Dolores Dumont. We offer our sympathy to his family, relatives, and many friends. I'd also like to offer a moment of silence in Docking Chamber for Michael, Timmy, Mickey O'Keefe. Retired Lowell Police Sergeant and United States Army Veteran. Mickey was born and raised in Lowell as the youngest of nine siblings. He attended St. Peter's Elementary School and was a proud graduate of Lowell High School, class of 1967. While at Lowell High School, he met the love of his life and wife of almost 54 years, Donna Peralte O'Keefe. The two were married in 1969 and raised four sons on Bill Ricker Street, Sean, Timothy, Brian, and Keith. Mickey played many roles in his life: police officer, veteran, hero, boxer, champion, trainer, movie star, comedian, and Lowell legend. He served on the Lowell Police Force for almost 34 years, earning the rank of Sergeant and receiving multiple medals for his lifesaving heroics. In the ring, he won both a Silver Mittens and a Golden Glove Championship. Through his, though his proudest achievements were the countless young athletes he trained, including Irish Mickey Wadd. For his dedication to the sport of boxing and the youth that it serves, he was recently awarded a Lifetime Achievement Award by the Golden Gloves of America. Many years after he retired his boxing gloves, Mark Wahlberg convinced him to play himself in the movie The Fighter, which incidentally won an Academy Award. From then on, Mickey was Hollywood Gramps to his 10 grandchildren, signing autographs and earning the status of local celebrity. He remained the family movie star long after his Hollywood debut, complete with his own remarkable, accurate bobblehead coined by the Lowell Spinners. He loved weekly breakfasts at the Owl Diner, his high school friends and being with his high school friends where he surely didn't mind seeing his favorite waitress, his wife Donna. He most certainly touched countless lives and has left an immeasurable impact on the city of Lowell and those who had the privilege to meet him. Mickey is survived by his loving wife Donna O'Keefe, four sons Sean, Tim, Brian, and Keith, and his 10 grandchildren. He will be truly missed, and I'd like to offer a moment of silence in Docking Chamber for all those who passed away since our last city council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Mercier. In other moments of silence or memorials, here and now, I want to thank Councilor Mercier for reading the memorial for Mr. O'Keefe. All everything you said is just wonderful. I would just like to add that the grandson of Mr. O'Keefe, Liam O'Keefe, is my son's best friend. They go to school together. And one thing about his acting skills, Mr. O'Keefe was a natural actor. Thank you for bringing and reading the moment of silence for him and his family tonight. Mr. Clerk, please dim the light for Docking Chamber, please. I'd like to welcome everyone to the chamber this evening, and everyone is watching us from home. As you know, this is a special meeting to complete the unfinished business from the previous meeting. We'll start with disclosure under the mayor's business, 2.1 Communication Remote Zoom Participation. Motion to accept and place on file by Councilor Scott, second by Councilor Robinson, on favor of the ayes. No, the ayes have it. Motion is carried. Councilor Yam?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. May I make a motion to suspend the rule and take the item 5.15? Out of order, please, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilor Yam, for making that motion to suspend the rule, take item 5.15 out of order, second by Councilor Nguyen. Councilor Nguyen?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. While you're at it, why don't we take also 5.14 out of order?
Okay. Motion by Councilor Yam to take item 5.14 out of order and also 5.15 out of order. Second by Councilor Nguyen, also to ask on 5.15, we have Mr. Samaras, former Mayor Samaras, and Dr. John Woodding to speak also. Second by Councilor Mercier. It is my honor, let me read my motion first on 5.15. My motion to request the office of the mayor to establish a sister-city relationship with Cork. And motion 5.14, it's a motion by Councilor Nguyen and Councilor Mercier, request city manager work with proper department to name part of the Riverwalk in memory of Robert Malovich, lifelong Lowellian and longtime planner in the Lowell Department of Planning and Development. We'll take motion 5.15 first. We have former Mayor Bill Samaras here and Dr. John Woodding. Dr. John Woodding is a former provost of UMass Lowell. He's also the president of Mill City Grow and many other projects in the city. Dr. Woodding and Mayor Samaras has worked for a very long time on this project called Lowell the Learning City, which hopes to have it recognized by UNESCO. And to do that, we need a sister relationship with Cork, Ireland, a very, very important city that could, through bilateral relationship, we could really share the experience together. At this point, I would like to ask Mayor Samaras to come to the podium first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the members of Lowell City Council for giving me this time to come before you to talk about this project, and more importantly, the project that you have, to make Cork a sister city. I did prepare some notes because, you know, I can run off in a tangent. So first, there are two reasons why I'm coming before to support this motion. I had two projects that were very important to me. They were, first, I wanted to create a sister city with Kalamata, Greece, a project supported by many members of the Greek community led by Bill Kafkas. The purpose of this project was to create an opportunity for us to share our history, culture, and to create educational and economic opportunities. COVID brought this to a quick halt. However, when we went to Mayor Chow, he worked with us to make it happen. As you know, it was a very successful venture. But now, my second motion that I had when I was mayor, I wanted to make Lowell the first UNESCO learning city in this country, a project that would bring Lowell or brand Lowell as a city of learning. The person that brought this project to me was Dr. John Woodding, the former provost of the University of Mass at Lowell. But COVID and the political climate in this country created many problems preventing this from happening. However, during that time, Dr. Woodding continued to work with members of UNESCO along with the leadership of the city of Cork. A UNESCO learning city, that's what he wanted to have. Many of these issues that have been, many of these issues have been resolved. And now with Mayor Chow motion to make Cork a sister city, this will enable us to tie all of these programs together to help us in our quest to make Lowell the first UNESCO learning city. This is a branding that will be very important to the city of Lowell because we have the University of Lowell, we have Middlesex Community College, we have an excellent K-12 school system. And we've, we've got it all. If Lowell becomes the first branded UNESCO learning city, it will be known worldwide amongst many very famous cities, especially historical cities in Asia, Europe, Africa, South America. Seems strange why we don't have it in Lowell, but we don't have it in the United States. But from what we gather, there are many cities now working towards that effort. But we have Dr. John Woodding, who's worked tirelessly to make sure that this will happen. And it gives me great pleasure to introduce my friend, but a friend to the city of Lowell. By the way, he lives in Cambridge, and half the projects that go on in Lowell, he's had a hand in it, Dr. John Woodding.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and everybody for having me here. This is a turn-up for the book. It's got a Brit advocating for sisterhood between America and Ireland, so I'll do my best to make that work. I've been to Cork three times in the last few years. The first time was to go to Cork when UNESCO had its triennial celebration and meeting of learning cities. Cork was awarded the Global Learning City Award of the Year, and getting that award was stunning, but it was also stunning to be there. There were over 700 people at the conference from 120 different countries. And I thought then that I hope that that happens in Lowell one day, and I live long enough to see it happen, and we may get there yet because I think Lowell was in great position to become a learning city. I'll explain that again in a minute. Cork is a lovely place. I wanted to tell you a little bit about it. It took us like a few minutes. It's very similar in many ways to Lowell. It's about twice the population, but depending on how you measure the boundaries, but 200,000 people live in the Cork area. It's the second largest city in Ireland. Like Lowell, the River Lee runs right through the middle of the city. It's very similar to Lowell in that respect and looks that way. It has a major research university, University College Cork, and I'm happy to say I'm friends and a colleague with the now president of that college, John Hawala, and has been incredibly supportive of what we've been doing here to make a learning city. It's also home to some major industry. There's 190 multinational corporations located in Cork. Among them are the major pharmaceuticals Pfizer, Johnson &amp; Johnson, Novartis. And here's a little fact for you. Cork is, 50% of the global production of Viagra comes from Cork. I don't know what to do with that information, but you'll always remember it, right? It's also home to the Munster Technological University, which is a very high-level, very, very developed technological engineering school, as well as the University College Cork, which is a research university with about the same number of students as UMass Lowell and providing the same number of doctoral degrees. So it's a very prestigious institution, and I'm happy to say that I have some connections to it. Cork is also the European headquarters of Apple Inc., which of course is a major employer. And again, I'm saying these things because of the economic and social convention connections you could get with someplace like Cork. Ireland, of course, is a member of the European Union, unlike my former country, which stupidly left it, in my opinion. And that connection to Europe is very important, both economically and socially, I think. So it's something else to think about. The Lord Mayor of Cork there go by the title Lord Mayor. That doesn't mean to say you can become ladies and lords here, although I'm sure you'd like to be. It's, the Lord Mayor is chosen by the council, as is the same in this house here every year. There's a new Lord Mayor. He's a geographer with a PhD and an historian. I haven't met him yet, but we're hoping he's going to come here during our Festival of Learning in October, and I'll come back to that in a second. Cork, like Lowell, is a very cultural city. The Irish are wonderful writers and playwrights. It has an opera house, several theaters. It runs a very large jazz and film festival every year that's sort of similar to our folk festivals in size and scope. And it's also a sister city with some major cities across the world: Cologne in Germany, Coventry in England, Rennes in France, San Francisco, which I think is in California, Swansea in Wales, and Shanghai. And over the last couple of years, we've been developing not only relationships between the community, between the university and University College Cork. And that's been very successful. In fact, last, this year, we signed a MOU with the University College Cork to explore sustainability, renewable energy, science, and engineering factors, and that's a deeply held relationship involving students and faculty who we hope to be exchanging between the two cities. That's following a MOU that was signed in 2015 to develop that relationship. There are a number of research collaborations, particularly around the RISD Institute for Sustainability now, that's now in place at UMass Lowell. So all of this is to say to you, this would really help us develop this notion, as Bill said, about Lowell becoming a learning city. For me, this was about thinking about learning, following the great Pat Morgan's comment about making Lowell a classroom without walls, that learning does not only go on in a classroom in front of people like me with a PowerPoint, right? It goes on in many, many ways, and the skills and knowledge of the people in Lowell are shared amongst themselves, and that's the idea that embodies the philosophy of a learning city. The learning city movement, which developed with UNESCO's creation of a lifelong learning institute, is now global. There's some 200-plus cities involved in this global network of learning cities, and UNESCO visits them and gives awards every year to the most prominent of those cities. As Bill said, there's never been one in North America. Lowell is now poised to become the first North American UNESCO-designated learning city, giving it a global connection. And I'd also say that, you know, we've tried very hard to get that to happen earlier on, but Donald Trump took us out of UNESCO, and then there was COVID. And so it's been a long, hard journey, which we've been working towards over the last couple of years by putting on the annual Festival of Learning and doing as much of that kind of work as we can. We signed an MOU, MOU between the city council and Cork three years ago, which is up for renewal, saying we'd work together. And the learning city idea is carrying that Morgan legacy along and carrying it further. And all I can say in conclusion is that that relationship has not only created a deep and profound connection between us and Cork through the learning city. It has been a model for what we've been trying to do here, but it has also resulted in lots of not only connections, but actual active activity. And I think that's important because a sister city can be just a piece of papulum, a piece of paper. This, we have the real opportunity because we already have those connections between the university, the city itself, and the library system and the educational system of Cork and Lowell. One example of that, and I'll finish here, is over the last two or three years, we produced two books that connected the two communities. The first was the prose and poetry of community members of Lowell and of Cork. It came out as a, called Atlantic Currents, published by Loom Press here in Lowell. Unfortunately, it came out in March of 2020, at the very moment the entire planet closed up, so we didn't get a lot of sales, and it was difficult to promote it. And then this year, we developed and created Atlantic Currents II, which is writing and prose between the students and alumni of UMass Lowell and University College Cork. So in conclusion, I'm saying to you that the work we've been doing for the learning city, which I think is a wonderful way to brand Lowell as Lowell loves learning, is much better than a college town, and it may be better than Mill City. And it's a way of making us a global worker, a global active city in the United States. I really do encourage you to make this sister relationship because it will really help us continue our work to make Lowell the first UNESCO learning city in North America. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Dr. Woodding, for being here. Any comments or questions by any of the councilor? Councilor Yam?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I remember attending the, it's like a conference of some sort, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Whitting put together at the Nancy Donahue Performance Center of Middlesex Community College. And the mayor, she was on a conference call like a Zoom, welcome the city and the delegation of Lowell. And I think this is, would be really great, like Dr. Whitten was talking about, putting Lowell in a world map with UNESCO. I think this is a great motions, and I, for one, would be happy to vote to support this. Thank you.
Councilor Leahy?
Thank you. I just want to thank Mayor Samaras and Mr. Woodling for coming down and presenting this again, and for you putting the motion on, Mr. Mayor. I think they're correct. We had a, we had one Zoom meeting, and then the world shut down for a couple of years, so it's good that we picked this back up and get the ball rolling and make sure this happens. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Here and now, again, I want to thank Dr. Woodding and Mayor Samaras for coming to support this. And it's both of you and the learning city project that really, you know, encouraged me to put this motion forward. And as Councilor Leahy mentioned, I'm very honored to pick up where the previous council left off, that's including Councilor Mercier, Councilor Elliott, and Councilor Kennedy at that time, that supported that MOU. This motion for a sister city is very important. As you know, the major tenet, the major goal of many sister cities is really about education and learning. And also, the history of Lowell is very integrated with the history of Irish from Ireland. This really, it's a full soka, soka, so to speak, to have this sister city relationship with Ireland. And I can see the smile on, the happy smile on my colleagues' faces. I have to earn my, my name, Mayor O'Chau somehow, and I think the sister city relationship with Ireland will cement that. With that said, all in favor, say aye. Oppose, say no, the ayes have it. Motion is passed. Thank you, Dr. and Mayor. The next motion that we will take up on is motion 5.14, Councilor Nguyen, Councilor Mercier, request city manager work with proper department to name part of the Riverwalk in memory of Robert Malovich, lifelong Lowellian and longtime planner in the Lowell Department of Planning and Development. Mr. Clerk, any registered speaker?
There are, Mr. Mayor. Nancy Pitkin?
Good evening. I'm Nancy Pitkin. I'm also involved in learning cities, so it's kind of neat to see that happening tonight, too. I want to thank the two counselors who brought the motion forward to name part of the Riverwalkway for Bob Malovich. Bob was a neighbor of mine. I watched his kids. I know that he was not a morning person, even though he would get up in the morning and bring his kids over to my house, especially in the summertime. And it's been a pleasure to know him. He loved the city of Lowell, and I think that naming part of the Riverwalkway for him is a great tribute for him. Thank you.
Anne Malovich?
Hi. Bob and I were married for 48 years. We celebrated our anniversary six days before his death. I want to thank you for bringing this motion. Just a little background, as was previously said, Bob was a lifelong Lowellian. The only time he left the city was to go to college, and he came right back. A month out of college, he took a job at the, what was then the City Development Authority, and never left until he retired. The only thing he loved more than Lowell was his family. He was very proud to be from Lowell. And to be on the ground floor of everything that happened here from 1969, when he started here, and right up until now. When Bob was a very young planner, so about 100 years ago, he When Bob was a very young planner, so about 100 years ago, he questioned why we weren't using the river at all, why there was nothing along the river. And he noted that other cities all over the world used their river fronts and had wonderful things going on there. And he said, "We need to use the river." And the older planners looked at him and said, "What can we do?" And Bob said, "Well, you could start with a River Walk." And they said, "That'll never happen." So I'm glad to see that it did happen, and that Bob maybe helped that along the way by putting that bug in someone's ear. And I'm really, really appreciative that the city would honor him this way. I know he's looking down with a big smile on his face. Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, any other speaker?
No, Mr. Mayor.
The maker of the motions, who would like to go first? Councillor Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an honor for me to present this motion along with councillor Noon, because this is a remarkable human being, Robert Malavich, planning, Department of Planning and Development Director. He had a vision. He had an idea. What is the story with the River, and we can't walk alongside of it? So eventually, that happened. But he had the vision to see that this should be developed, and it was. I think it's a fitting tribute to a man that loved this city so much, as Anne Marie said. I just think it's a great idea, and we could refer this motion to the, I know we can't actually name things ourself, but we have a naming monument, a naming committee. If we could just refer this motion, I know that councillor Noon is going to speak as well, but I know, and I spoke to Steve Stowell, resident city historian, who knows completely that this is a great motion and so well-deserving at that. So I'm honored to have presented this motion along with councillor Noon, who's going to add to this as well. But it's an honor for me. It's a right motion. It's the right thing to do for a man that did so much planning and development and ideas for the city. So even after he retired, he gave back to the city and the planning department, planning board, quite a remarkable man. And I'm not going to just say that, but Anne Marie is, too. She's a remarkable woman. So I'm honored to have presented it. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Mr. Malavich has spent his life serving Lowell. The least Lowell can do is to name part of the River Walk, you know, in his memory. I think this council agree with that, you know? So to refer this to the committee that make decision on this, and hoping that the committee will honors, you know, the whole council and the whole city in naming part of the River Walk after Mr. Robert Malavich. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, could we have a roll call after?
Absolutely. Councillor Getchier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had the pleasure to work for the city at the time Mr. Malavich was working for the city. He was always a gentleman, intelligent, dedicated city worker. And these are the type of people that we should look to name things after, that had a vision for the city and gave the city more than we ever could give back to them. He was here every day. You never missed Mr. Malavich. So I think this is a great motion, and I fully support it.
Councillor Yum?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, too, personally have a pleasure working with Bob. He's very compassionate. He understands, and he treat everybody fairly as he wanted to be treated. In the mid-1990s, I was the executive director of the Cambodian American League. So we put proposal for grants for CDBG. So I went to the hearing, make presentation. The first word Bob said to me after we finished, he said, "I'm glad to see a new faces, you know, make presentation about the grants, because I see the same face every year." So he was very kind and happy to include everyone who want to serve a city as much as he loved the city. He will be missed. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments or questions? Here and now, Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Councillor Mercier?
Yes.
Councillor Noon?
Yes.
Councillor Robinson?
Yes.
Councillor Rourke?
Yes.
Councillor Yum?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Councillor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Councillor Getchier?
Yes.
Councillor Janess?
Yes.
Councillor Leahy?
Yes.
Tenyes?
No other, suspension of rule. Congratulations to the family. Councillor Leahy?
Thank you. While we're still on the suspension, I just wanted to note that motion 517, I thought it had to be on in a timely manner. It was filed in a timely manner, but it can be discussed next week, so we'll take that off tonight's agenda.
Okay, we just postponed that, so we don't need a motion for that. Thank you, councillor. The clerk will note that we'll postpone that to the next meeting. We'll now go back to where we left off on the agenda. Section three, the communications from city manager. These are the motion responses we did not get to the last time. We'll start with the alphabet K. This is on housing first update. Any comment, councillor Janess, or councillor Noon? Councillor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to thank the administration for putting this report together. I appreciate getting this response back. However, I do have some questions and am troubled by some of the stuff that's in here. The first thing is, I'll say, I fully understand and acknowledge all the headwinds against implementing a housing-first policy here in the city. Everything that's listed are 100% issues that we're dealing with and that we need assistance with. However, we continue every week, or almost every week, to have long, in-depth discussions about the homelessness crisis within the city and really across the Commonwealth and the region. Because of that, I'm really troubled to read housing first is on hold in Lowell. We need to, we need to find ways to push this forward, even if it's incremental, even if it's a struggle. We need to do better than to say it's on hold. This report references the regional summit that was held at UMass Lowell about a month and some time ago. During those discussions, one of the topics that came up from one of the speakers was this concept of being all in, and how everyone needs to be all in in order to move the needle on homelessness. So to say that housing first is on hold really goes against that. And I've heard from some people who say, you know, the council adopted housing first as the city's homelessness policy several years ago. We've had a pandemic, and if housing first is on hold, do we have a housing strategy? Do we have a plan to combat homelessness within the city? So I think it's time, really, to take some of these points and our challenges and look for solutions that are based on a cooperative approach between us, the state, and the federal government. And I think the first step there is really to begin some dialogue and some communications with the other cities in Massachusetts that are struggling with similar housing crises. Whether it's Worcester, Brockton, New Bedford, Lawrence, there's many, many cities across this state who are challenged with these same issues. And while we in Lowell may not be able to move the needle at the State House with our three state reps and our one state senator, if we can work with the other cities across the state, there's a potential here to do something that's greater than the sum of its parts. So I would highly, highly encourage the administration to begin those discussions. And also, we should look at other cities across this country that have had success with a housing-first strategy, to understand what they did to implement it and what their challenges were, because I'm sure they had their own. Columbus, Ohio, has had a 70% success rate housing their homeless by following a housing-first strategy. Salt Lake City, Utah, saw a 91% drop in chronic homelessness between 2005 and 2015. Houston, Texas, cut their homelessness rate by more than half between 2011 and 2020. This is not an overnight solution, but it is a solution that we need to work towards. Housing first has also been shown to save money for communities investing in the strategy. One study has shown that for every $10 invested in the strategy, $9.60 was saved for high-needs participants, $3.42 was saved for moderate-needs participants. But for the 10% of the highest-cost participants, every $10 that was invested in a housing-first strategy resulted in $21.72 in savings of meeting the needs of this population. So there's an opportunity here if we can work together with other communities and figure out how to move this forward. My last point is, I will say that HUD, along with the U.S. Interagency Council on Homelessness and the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs, announced on January 26th of this year that more than 140,000 people experiencing homelessness have been permanently housed using the housing-first approach through a program called House America, a national initiative to address the homelessness crisis. How do we in Lowell get involved with that? How do we bring some of those resources to bear to address our crisis here in the city of Lowell? Once again, I thank you for the report, and I understand the challenges, but we need to, we need to do what we can to move this forward. And I hope that we'll be able to do that. And please let me know if there's anything I can personally do to help move the needle on this.
Councillor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do share my colleague concern, frustration, as well as suggestion in how we should go about address this homelessness issue. This challenge is not just the city alone across the United States. And this council many time have discussed homeless issues, and even to a point that this council have declared homelessness as a public health crisis. And to learn that we put housing first on a hole, that concerned me, I'm sure, it may be concerned my colleague as well, should concern my colleague. And we know that city alone cannot do this job, cannot resolve homelessness. City is a convener, convene all those partner, find solution. It take time. But we have, we have to do it. It's not easy. But it make us stronger and healthier as a cities and housing the people that need to be housed. I asked last council meeting about plan, do we have plan, put together a plan, working with a partner. One thing I would suggest that the city reconvene the homelessness task force meeting that we had since the housing first initiative was implemented back in 2019. I think just about a year and a half now, we have yet to reconvene those group. Those are partner. Together with our partner, we can really address these issues. And I understand, I agree with a lot of stuff that's said here, that this is a regional issues, and we need to bring all the partner and the player together. We have to do that. So I would urge that maybe next month, reconvene a task force meeting, and that the city is a co-chair of, and looking to re, you know, start the housing first initiative. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you for this report. I hear these comments from my colleagues. I've been hearing these same comments for quite some time now. I mean, let's have, if we're going to talk a realistic conversation about housing-first approach, let's have a realistic discussion. Look downtown. Perfect examples of housing first. We have four or five people that are known regulars to the city. They've all been housed first. 11 or 12 different apartments throughout the city and have been evicted and they're back on the street, because they're not capable of being housed first by themselves. They're not capable of sustaining the basic necessities. The mental health component, there's many things that have to go first. We've been doing this housing first and hearing housing first in all these other communities. It's such a great success. But yet, here, it's failed miserably. That's why we are at the current state we're in. We convened a summit. You know what that summit really was? That was everybody that attended from outside of Lowell telling Lowell how we can do more. That's what I got from that summit. So, I mean, we can dress this up and talk pretty for the people at home or for your supporters, but at the end of the day, everyone in that room was looking to, how can Lowell do more? A regional summit. Regional. But yet, Lowell was the focus of how can we do more? We've declared a crisis. We haven't seen a penny from the state in excess to help us with this problem. We've prioritized the unhoused in our city. What happens? They turn around and say, "By the way, we're bringing 300 potential people to your city, and we're going to stick them up and also logjam the list, the waiting list, of people in your community that are waiting for some kind of housing availability. And PS, we don't, we're not increasing inventory." I mean, if we're going to have real conversations about addressing the unhoused problems, this is something the state and the feds need to step up on, period. They can make all the excuses they want in the world, and people can talk these great speaking points that they hear and read about in different journals or whatever you see online. But look around our community. A lot of these things that have been discussed have not worked. In this report, it clearly states, and I don't see how anyone disputes this, we're currently gridlocked into a process that no longer working due to the barriers listed below. Lack of land to build within the infrastructure of our city. We can only go up, we can't go out. Lack of reasonable buildings that could be renovated. Superior courthouse is a perfect example. It's state-owned property, and it's about a $30 million lift to make that ADA compliant. We don't have the means or the resources. Lack of workforce to provide staffing and case management. Again, where are these resources coming from? I heard some of my other colleagues making comments that if we do receive the X amount of migrants, oh, it would be great. We can hire about 40 of them. At $60,000 to $70,000 apiece, I don't know where that money's coming from. We don't even know if we're receiving any assistance to help house these people. Cost of renovations has become unaffordable for any one agency. That's absolutely correct. $30 million overhaul on the Superior courthouse, that would need multi-agencies to come together with state funding. Time to renovate exceeds three years. Timing can be streamlined, but again, it comes down to resources. Weak incentives for developers and investors. At the end of the day, if the state and the feds are not willing to fund projects that are going to address the core of this, I don't see how we're going to attract anybody to do anything. Look outside our window. Smith Baker's been sitting empty and ready to crumble. Because, again, if people are not going to see a profit on development projects like this, and if the state is not providing the resources and really rolling up their sleeves and saying this is a priority, or at least listening to local communities' priorities, I don't see how we can advocate for housing first. Housing first is not alone going to be the magic bullet that pulls the unhoused and gets them back on their feet. The mental health components, the substance abuse components, and not to mention statewide, there's a shortage of mental health beds. Statewide, there's a shortage of beds for detox facilities. Statewide. These are all states' responsibilities. But yet, communities like Lowell are left trying to dig out of a hole, and we're going to start kicking around and pitching, yeah, why don't we look to housing first? Well, I would entertain this idea down the road if the state is willing to commit to increase the inventory of available housing units for the unhoused, as well as the potentials coming into the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Because this is a discussion about homelessness, I just thought I'd add a piece of information, and I thought it was a good way to segue it in, because one component of homelessness are the people that are out on the street that are just fed up with what their life is turning into, and they like to go to detox. And our co-op team tried to get someone to detox, and there's no transportation funds available. detox, and there's no transportation funds available. And when someone applied, and I don't know who applied for the transportation grant, and I don't know who did that, was it someone in the Health Department? I'm not sure. Nobody's aware of who put that together, but I saw at work quite a bit where people would get a ride from a company, maybe Luna Taxi or whatever, to a facility, and yet there's no money. And we're talking about shot money, it's $15,000, and we don't have anything available now. So wouldn't it be sad that we have beds available, but we don't have any way to get them there? Now, I know that I could put someone in my car and take them, but I think it's a liability when the city takes a person in their van up there, so I can't get into liabilities and all that. So I'm just giving you a heads up on what's happening, and we need that service back. Thank you.
I'm going to have one more counselor make a comment before I have the manager respond. Counselor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just echo my colleague's sentiments, Counsel Robinson. I don't think at any point in this report does it say that the city wants Housing First to be on hold. It just is on hold because we are at a gridlock. As it states in the report, there is a lack of housing. So we have so many things working against us in the city. Many of them are listed here, but we also have, you know, workforce shortages, we have extremely high construction costs happening right now. We are a handful of cities in Massachusetts, not every city in Massachusetts is a refugee resettlement city. We have taken thousands of refugees across, through the years because we are a welcoming city, and we have the resettlement agencies located in Lowell. So that feeds into our shortage. We also, you know, in my prior time on the school committee, I can tell you that we saw hundreds of families coming here from other states, from Florida, from New Hampshire, because we house families. You know, we are right-to-housing state in Massachusetts. So all of these things have really, you know, been a burden. I mean, people are burdened, but the process has been a burden on the city of Lowell, and we are stretched really thin. And I see on the bottom, there are solutions listed here, they do all involve state and federal funding. One of them says they need to intervene to require surrounding towns to provide buildings that can be converted to supportive housing. Our suburban neighbors, two acres, two acres for zoning, you know, per lot to build a new home, and, you know, they're not helping with the housing crisis. And Lowell just does more and more and more. And at some point, I feel like, you know, the poorest citizens in the city should not take the burden all the time for this. It's been a disinvestment in federal housing for years. So I think there are solutions here, but just to point a finger and say, you know, no, you need to do housing first is not going to work. So, thank you.
Go first, Counsel Gishier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, being a person who likes numbers, I just wondered how successful the program was in the beginning, and during that program, where the people who were being placed, did we lose service providers? Is that the reason why they're displaced? Or, you know, there's a lot of things that are moving pieces here. I do not disagree with Counsel Robinson and Counsel Scott, or Counsel Janess in that fact. I just wondered, because there is a burden to the resident also, when they're homeless. Our Parks Department is getting overwhelmed. There are a lot of things. I just wondered how successful or lack of success was coming out of the program while it was in place, and if, did we carry that data and those numbers? And if those numbers aren't there, then I think that, you know, if Counsel Robinson has those numbers, then it makes sense to say what they're saying. So I just, I think the report is lacking a lot of information to go, to make a decision this quick, and I'd like to make a motion that the manager come back with information when the program was actually in place on how many people were placed, and what is the outcome? If there were 100 people placed, and 88 of them are still placed, then it's a successful program, and they got services. Who was placed, what services were offered? And I think that that's where, there's a burden to all of us by not doing anything also. So there has to be a happy medium, and we just need to know the data from the city of Lowell. And I think that that's the key. What happens in the city of Lowell for the data, that's all. And what did we actually do while it was in place, Counsel?
Counsel Gishier, do you want to make that motion on the floor? If I can make a motion just to have- To resolve that program, or do you want to wait to see what the manager has to say first, and then maybe you can make it after? So we'll save that for now?
Yeah.
Because I'm going to have the other counselors go also, so I can respond all at one time.
Thank you.
Counsel, drink water?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I support the motion that was just made. I think this council needs a lot more information first before making any sort of judgments or assessments on the effectiveness of the Housing First strategy. It seems to me that the issue here seems to be with developing enough housing with the services that need to be provided to really fit the Housing First strategy. So I look forward to getting more information on this before we make any further assessments on the success. Thank you.
Counsel Leahy?
Just my two cents from observing the situation, reading reports and stuff, and talking to a few people, I think the biggest thing too is that if we do develop housing, it needs to be supervised, but the biggest complaint I hear is that we separate everybody. So you have a group of 10 people, say downtown, they each get a place to go, but it's 10 separate rooms in 10 separate communities, and that's a problem. And I don't see why who, you know, when we're putting these ideas together, we have to figure out a place to put these 10 people together with supervision and the help they need, and it would be more successful in my eyes. I feel that that's one of the biggest drawbacks to housing a lot of the people that are out on the streets is they all get separated, and they're with people they don't know. So that's got to be a, that's got to play a key role here. We have to figure out with the state and the feds, places to house people with supervision and the resources, but we have to put them together. They don't want to be separated. That's why this thing fails time and time again. Thank you.
Before I have the counsel go back, it's been a second time, I'd like to hear the report from the manager and respond to some of the comments, and see if the councils have different comments or questions. Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and three to the council. First of all, counselors, I apologize. The terminology on hold was not the correct terminology at all, and it really brings something back to light, and for that, not picking that up in the report is my fault, so I apologize for that. It doesn't even make sense, actually, when you talk about SMOC and CTI with the units that I know many of you have been through on West Rid Street, the fact that we're still working on Andover Street, which are another nine units, Summer Street, which we're working with our partners at CTI for another additional 19 units. So the term "on hold" should not have been there. I think what might have been there, and I'm just thinking about this, is the frustration that my team has been feeling. The frustration that I could sit here and talk to you about other opportunities that we've had that have slipped away, and it's slipped away because we haven't had, we haven't been able to come to fruition to actually solve the problem when it comes to a real estate transaction. I cannot speak highly enough about the partners, the main partners that we've been working with over the past year-plus, and I'm not afraid to say this, SMOC and CTI have been incredible partners in trying to get this done. We've really started to concentrate on what is happening on Broadway Street. We're concentrating on Cross Street, which is, once again, if you think of the number of things that we have, cooking, and I've always used this thought of we have irons in the fire or irons next to the fire. Cross Street, that iron is in the fire. Broadway Street, that iron is in the fire. It's going to be happening, it's going to take us a couple of years to get this accomplished. I'm very, I'm very sad to say that we had a women's shelter thought process, an idea, a real idea, that that iron was about to go into the fire, and it's not. So, once again, my apologies on the quote-unquote "on hold." It was, it was worded, it was a poor choice of words, and I really believe it is due to the fact that we have these great things going on, and once again, West Rid Street, Andover Street, Summer Street, that we're hoping, I believe Summer Street be by October, November this year. I'm kind of looking for a little help there. I know they're working towards that. But the many challenges that I thought were brought up by some of the other counselors in the sense that there were one of the places, especially, well, West Rid Street, to be very specific, they couldn't open up the entire property, and it was because of employment. It was employment challenges with trying to hire people. But in speaking with the president of the board just last week, that is, it's in a better position today. I believe all of the 21 rooms are being utilized. So that is, that is a good piece. We're continuing to search to see where we can continue to grow. The amount of money that we are putting into this, not only from opera, but our own personal and trying to support, you know, I hate just to say our two largest partners, because we do have Vinfen, Co-op is working tirelessly. And to Counsel Mercy's point in regards to the taxi piece, we're up here looking for it, and my apologies that Co-op doesn't know this. Assistant City Manager Machado will be dealing with this tomorrow, as well as the CFO to make sure that that fund is available, because we do indeed use the taxi company, Luna Taxi, and that should never be a hindrance for anybody that wants to go into any type of treatment. So I hope we will have the ability to put that person back into treatment. That is something I'm glad that was brought to my attention. But as far as starting up Tuesday outreach programs, that's been convened for quite some time, that has still been going on, but that is only for the folks that you would term as outreach folks. People that are actually, it's a very personal matter when you have someone's name on it. Some people want to join it, but at that point, if they're not outreach, if they're not part of the outreach team, they're not at that meeting. If there is an issue and somebody feels as though they should be part of that outreach team, please let me know. Great Lowell Community Foundation, CTI, Lowell Plan, they've been doing a great job, and I believe it was Counsel Janess, I apologize, I was writing down different things, bringing up, or maybe it was Counsel Gishier, I apologize here, but we're discussing bringing this back in to reconvene this particular piece. Our housing coordinator is celebrating her daughter's wedding, I believe, this week, but I believe this is going to be done before October 1st. We're bringing these folks back in, and that is taking over what our community members have been doing for some time. Great Lowell Community Foundation, which we thank very much, CTI, and so on and so forth. So that will be something that is going to be, and now that I look at it, it was Counsel Noonan, I apologize, sir. We will be putting that back into the mayor's reception room to kind of get to that yes. How do we get to yes on that? We do have finances, we do have the availability to do this, but our number-one challenge has been location. So location and employment has been that piece. So I believe that all the counselors, we've talked about this privately, we talk about it publicly, but all the points are very well taken. From the prioritization, from the mental health piece, to the fact that some folks, they've had housing and they just don't utilize it any longer, this is a challenge that I know our police department has been doing a fine job trying to make that happen, the different types of camp cleanups that have been happening throughout the city, and we're just going to continue to explore those opportunities. So I take your frustration, and I, once again, I have to apologize for the terminology, which, as you can see, the piece on hold with the number of units that we have actually coming online, as well as Broad Street, Broadway, Cross, we're moving in a better direction. We are just going to end up becoming short, as every other city in town is when it comes to housing individuals, because there are folks that, quite frankly, they have housing, they just prefer to hang out, they hang out in certain areas. And I'll give you Cayenne Street as one of our latest cleanups. To my knowledge, I shouldn't probably shoot from the hip on this, but the number of people that were there, the vast majority of people had a place to live, had a place to sleep, had a place to, a warm bed. They just chose to hang there, hang out down there, and there were in the low single digits of people that we tried to offer services to, that refused to take those. So as always, counselors, I appreciate the feedback, I appreciate the calls, I appreciate the discussion, and there's a couple of you that actually go around and say, hey, I just saw this building, can you find out if that's available? And that's something that DPD and Assistant City Manager, Bia's Rose, has always been, she gets those, when you send them to me, believe me, she gets them. So she does the tracking down to find out if that's something we can do. So thank you all very much, and I'd gladly entertain the follow-up motion from Counsel Gishier, or we can just have this continue in regards to the 49 units that we have coming online, and how are we taking care of folks? Because once again, if it wasn't for CTI, if it wasn't for the shelter or SMOC or Middlesex Street, we would be, as a city, we would have more problems than we do. And I think they're doing, they're doing a fine job, given the challenges that are in front of them. Thank you.
Counsel Janess, did you have a follow-up question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, thank you very much to Manager Golden for that update. I think there's a lot of good information in there, and I appreciate that very much. Secondly, I'd just like to address some of the points that were mentioned earlier. I fully agree that there are a handful of people downtown that unfortunately have caused most of the issues. If somebody says homeless in downtown, we all think of the same six, eight, 10 people. Counsel Robinson is 100% correct. Putting those people in a house, we've done it once, we've done it twice, we've done it five times, it has not solved the issue, and it won't solve the issue. Housing First is not housing only. Unless these people are housed and then surrounded with the supportive services they need to address their mental health challenges, their physical health challenges, their joblessness, et cetera, et cetera, you don't get any traction. And I don't want to say that this administration is not working on this. That's not what I meant, and if it was taken that way, I sincerely apologize. But I will say, we have, the latest email we got from the coordinator says there are 291 total homeless folks in the city of Lowell. 165 of them are currently unsheltered. Saying we can't do a strategy because it doesn't work for six, eight, 10 people doesn't take into account the other 155 people who it possibly could work for. And yes, it's a commitment, and yes, there are challenges. There are endless amounts of commitment that we need from our state partners, from our federal partners, probably need more than the nonprofits we have working on this problem. We can't materialize that out of thin air. Fully respect that, fully appreciate that. My comment about, about working with the other cities across the state who are facing these issues is to address those last points that are in this memo. The things that we need buy-in from the state and federal government, the more voices that we have that say, hey, our neighbors next door got to pitch in. It's true for us, it's probably true for other cities that I mentioned earlier. These challenges are not universal, but experienced by many communities across this state, across this region, across this country. Finding ways to work together and being all in is how we're going to move the needle on this. And I fully appreciate the work that goes into it, and I look forward to seeing where we go with this, and I appreciate Counsel Gishier's motion. The more data we have, the better. My memory is that, I could be wrong, but I believe Housing First was adopted late 2019, which obviously didn't leave a whole lot of time before the pandemic really kicked in and kind of threw everything up in the air. So I understand that we're still kind of putting pieces back together from that. You know, the pandemic affected everything. Chief among them was new initiatives that the city was trying to implement, and other communities were as well. So I understand those challenges, and I appreciate those challenges, and I'm just looking to figure out how we can move the needle on this. Thank you very much.
Counsel Gishier, did you want to follow up on your motion?
Sure, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that we refer this back to the manager and provide us with more data for this issue.
Okay, motion by Counsel Gishier, second by Counsel Scott, on favor of the Ayopos and not Ice Harbor, motion is carried. We still can continue to discuss this. You also, Counsel Gishier? Counsel Scott?
Thank you. I would just add, if we can, I guess, to that, that we do also receive data, just, we mentioned the number of unhoused residents that we have that are in the reports that we receive. We also, I don't want to jump ahead, but we also have a report from CTI about the number of people that are in, families that are in hotels right now. So I don't know, could we get a picture- So I don't know, could we get a picture of like what we're looking at for the total number of units that we're really short right now in the city to even move forward with any type of Housing First initiative? Because this report here is 378 individuals at Methuen's Days Inn. Those are Lowell residents, I believe. Those Lowell families getting transported back here. I, I think that's why we had the report.
Mr. Madro?
Sorry, council, that's CTI, which covers multiple cities and towns. So CTI is obviously based out of Lowell. We ask them and they will just tell us what they have hosting in this area. So that would be, is it to say that everyone's from Lowell? That wouldn't be, that wouldn't be, that would not be correct.
I'm just curious, how many residents right now are we looking at that are unhoused? Not just the unhoused, unsheltered, I guess, I'm looking for that number as well. So, thank you.
Councilor Noonan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say this, that, you know, since 2019, CTI, SMARC and a number of our partners use the Housing First Initiative. If you look at, the manager mentioned Westwood Street, that is Housing First Initiative. You know, you don't ask people whether you have addiction, mental health, if you do have any of that, you can't come in. Well, a lot of homeless people, you know, first things they worry about is shelter over their head, food. And after they come in, after you do all that, then you address their issue. And it's work. It's work in a number of those places. SMARC, on Westwood Street, Enover Street, CTI, on Broadway, Cross, and so many other areas, including CBA recently, 555 Merrimack Street, just about to do opening soon. They have the, provide addiction down in the basement, or not the basement, on the first floor, where people go to work and come home, don't have to leave the house. Same building coming down to meeting, to service. And who to say that we can get those, some trouble homeless who's in downtown to come to the program? They may not be able to, we're not going to solve the whole homeless issue. But does not mean that we should abandon the rest of the people that we can help. Does not mean that we cannot work with the partners to get to the yes that Mr. Manager I think we need to start talking with our partners, reconvene that meeting and see what needs to be done. Ask the state for help. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No other comments or questions on this? We now move on to the next motion response, the alphabet L on CTI hotel programs. Any common question, Councilor Noonan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So again, all of us know and recognize and appreciate CTI and what they've done with the, addressing the, the homeless populations, not just individual, but families. And winter is coming. I'm not sure if their, you know, contract with this state is, maybe the manager know is expired or renewed. If Mr. Managers can add to it, I appreciate it.
Any other comments or questions on this? Here we go. We need to go to the next motion response, alphabet M on Department Head Bios. Councilor Noonan?
I think the manager office has started doing that. This is motion was back in May 2022, Mr. Mayor. So it's a lot of, lot has been done. I know that maybe, and, you know, an update on it would be great.
No other comment? The next motion response, update fully funded positions currently vacant. Any comment, Councilor Gitcher?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, thank you for the report. Last time I asked for this report, I actually got a list of what positions they were in the length of time because some of them we're having real challenges with and some of them were vacant for like a year, a half year. I, I do welcome the data itself, but on the backside, we had a list of the names and what posi, the positions, the name of the positions. If, if you could just get that back to us, that's all. Because I really think that if we're not getting these positions in there a year, two years, is there a way we can get to the career center and try to find out a path for people to be trained to start looking at these positions? Because I think we talk about the unhoused, we talk about all affordable housing, all of these things, and we're still looking at many vacancies. And I'm just wondering, you know, let the time, if this just fell in because 30 people retired yesterday, then it's not really an issue. But if they've been there for six, eight months and we're talking about unhoused and stuff like that, one of the major things that the driver is to this, and, and the manager has worked extremely hard on and well, is increasing salaries so that we could lure more people in. And, and I think, I thank you for that because I think you're going to keep morale in employees. And, and you know, I look at the city hall staff and I know you're working on their raise increases and stuff like that, but that's the driver a lot of times is we're in a competition for the same employee. And how do we get, and even to retain our employees? And I know it every day because I see it, our employees are getting offered just a couple dollars more. And I think the quicker we get to them and say, look, you're a valuable employee, here it is, but middle management's going to hold you accountable for your position, we could reduce these numbers fast and have some longevity. And I just ask that we just provide that so we can have a better discussion on those positions.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through to the council. Councilor, I think that's a, a good idea because we had 126 at one point, it started at 86, went up to 126. But I mean, maybe actually taking this report back, if that's okay with the council, and putting those pieces out, that's actually, maybe someone's going to say, hey, how come we didn't see this particular job and we know somebody? Because we're taking all comers. It's, it's interesting with our, the system that we have, there are times when you put out a job and it's, you kind of wonder if anyone's looking for a job. And not to be funny, but we put out the library position and 32, like 32, 32 people applied. It was a, you know, it's just, it's like a hit and miss type thing sometimes. And we're, you know, working with Mass Hire and Mass Hire actually has really helped the city chop that number down to where it is today. But looking at the dates of how long this has been open, it's always also given us that opportunity to say we can't get somebody at that rate of pay, just simply because our competition level at times when we're looking at trades or something to that effect, quite frankly, we looked right up the street. UMass Lowell is, is doing this and, and sometimes there's other, other schools that are doing some type of dollar figure where we happen to be just way, way too far off. So if that's okay with the council, I would love to take this back. We can list out, see how long they've been open and if somebody has an idea as to how that could change, we're all ears, if that's okay.
I do think one of the drivers to keeping employees is retention between the actual pay they get. And when you look at like, take City Hall, when you settle some union agreements and there's head clerks in it that get that adjustment before others that are here, and then someone's trying to lure you out, they run quick. They just say, you know, I don't have value, because they're not in the negotiations as you are, as certain people are, so they don't see how far along you are in a process to give them the same. But it kicks morale a little bit differently because some unions have the same titles in them and we don't realize that going across. As, as you know, we did it with one group, five of them got the raise, the other person's like, wait a minute, I do the same thing, where am I? And, and I think that that's the tough piece of retention and keeping some employees' value. And it's not to say we don't, we don't cherish their, their, their work. We just may have made a misstep in between and said we're not valuing, valuing them at the same time, even though you're in, you only have so much time to evaluate each union piece. So it's important that we look at every job description that we're negotiating and try to give out the same timeframe raises because some people have really taken this personal that someone over here got it at a different time than someone over here. And they're valuable employees to all of us, so I would just ask that we would relook at some of those things. On the retention side, I think it's important that we, we kind of just have the conversation and say, you're here, we're doing this, you're getting it. Thank you.
Mr. Madro?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. Councilor, you're absolutely correct. We've been taking this department by department and we had a pretty successful, some of you councilors could stop by. The Employee Appreciation Day, which was very, very well attended. I would like to say that Assistant City Manager Machado was out there cooking, but that's not the case at all. But, but to your point, council, that is, it is very, very well taken. I tried to talk to every group, you know, departments, they all hang together, right? Every department is together and they're throwing bags and having a, you know, a little bit of cornhole, having fun. But I have to say thank you to the labor units because they've been very, very helpful. They've, they've been working hard, I know, and a special thank you to our CFO for going through the verbiage and trying to get it accomplished. So it is coming, it is, as I stated previously in my past discussions with trying to do this, this is a lot more difficult than I ever anticipated it would be when it comes to trying to go through each department. And it is a little bit of a rub. And I've, I've talked to people directly about that, about a particular clerk, let's, let's use the word clerk, where, you know, we're paying this clerk over in this union, but in the next union, they didn't get the bump yet because we're still waiting on paperwork. I asked people to, to hang in, where we are plugging through this and it's my, my goal to get, we're working with wastewater right now, I think everybody knows that, that's no secret, and we're simultaneously working with ASME right now on clerks and everything else. So we are getting there and it is a little bit painful, I will say this, when you go through a particular department and you think you've hit everybody and you miss one person. So that's a, we are always rallying back on that, so I appreciate that point.
Your answer, counselor? Okay, Councilor Scott?
Just a quick question, and I may be way off base. As far as wages, I understand you're looking at wages. Does benefit review only happen like in the terms of the contract, like negotiations? Or is that something that you're looking at? I, I do think the city is a little bit light on some of their benefits, so I didn't know if that's something that's under review as well.
Mr. Manager?
Some of that is reviewed through the PEC, which is unions, and that's something we probably would be talking about once again. We're going to be coming up in June of 2024 for a complete review. But, you know, just Monday, sorry, just yesterday, we were having a discussion in regards to what else employee, employee opportunities? What else can we provide with education, with other healthcare runs? And it really, we're, we're terming it employee wellness. What can we actually do where we're going to be a little bit different than other municipalities throughout, throughout the Commonwealth of Massachusetts? What does employee wellness mean to you? It may, might be different, you know, to Councilor Mercy, it might be different to Councilor Drinkwater. But what I would encourage you, councilors, if you could, not today, but just to shoot me an email to say, you know, from employee wellness standpoint, the, I keep saying the Commonwealth, I apologize, the city may be looking at different items, different educational opportunities, different healthcare opportunities where we want people to truly look at the city as a place where we want them to continue to grow. I think that's the best way to put it. And that's kind of where we're structured thus far with the compensation packages we've put out. It's compensating people who are continuing to grow within their job. The easiest one is probably over at DPW where if you have additional CDL licenses or hoisting licenses, you are getting additional money. Because we want to encourage all of our employees to grow in their job where they have more responsibility and more opportunity to, to hopefully grow right here in the city. So anything on the wellness side, that has been a discussion that we'll continue to talk about. I wish I could tell you it's going to, it'll, we'll break it out in four weeks, but I think that'll be something we will be looking to bring forward to the council for a discussion. So if there's any ideas or thoughts, please feel free to send an email or, or a discussion. I talk, we talk often, so.
Thank you. So, so that would include things like time off, like as far as, you know, the two weeks vacation starting, no, that's separate? Because I, I think we're a little behind in areas like that. Also hybrid work is another big area that people are really looking at in the workforce to, you know, to accept positions, so.
That would be something we, the wellness piece that we're looking at right now does not include that, but we're anticipating that discussion in this coming year. I mean, I think I've floated or discussed or talked different ideas with everybody here as to how we can have a healthier workforce. Is it a four-day work week? Is it shared work? Is it anything like that? I think I've, I haven't challenged, but I've talked to the presidents of the unions to say, what would that look like in your department? Now, some departments, that would be extremely challenging, we may not be able to do that. But in some of our other departments, we may. So it's, it's, all of these different ideas are, are on, we've talked about them and, you know, is it seniority gets to pick the first four days and, you know, second piece of, you know, and I'm looking at Councilor Robinson, we work together and he's got seniority, he works Monday through Thursday, I work Tuesday through Friday. I don't know if that could work in every, every department, but that's something we're looking at. Do we extend hours not only on Tuesday, but is it another day? It may or may not work, I'm not sure, but it's something that we're willing to find out if the, if the employees are interested in it. Because some employees need to be out of here on four o'clock. They have other obligations to other family members, so this may not work. But it is something that we will be talking about, I believe, this coming, well, sooner rather than later, to be prepared for the next contract round of negotiations.
Yeah, that's excellent. I think that definitely will help, you know, overall with morale and, and, you know, just hiring. I think COVID kind of brought to light that people wanted kind of like that work-life balance after they came back to work. And I think this is definitely the direction to go. Thank you.
Councilor Robinson?
Thank you. First, I'd like to say I'm glad to see the two jobs with the Health Department are posted, the Clinical Recovery Specialist and the Assistant Syringe Coordinator. I know that, especially the Syringe Coordinator, that's, I don't know how Andre's been keeping up with the volume that he's been doing, so we're lucky to have him. Some of the other things that, that you're starting to see trending in a lot of other communities, obviously the training, as well as daycare options for the employees. That is something some communities are offering, working with local community partners to offer some kind of daycare option for their employees, which is a big help in a lot of instances. Gym memberships as well. That's another piece that other communities are going to. Local YMCA's and stuff like that, there's a way to facilitate some kind of gym membership option for your employees. And there's even incentives. I know, I know the correction offices, they receive a bonus annually if they, they pass a physical fitness component of their job. So I mean, there are some things that, that it's kind of fun and it also helps keep the employees, it incentivizes employees as part of a package, an employment package. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Here we go. We now go to the next motion response, the alphabet O. This is on enforcement, no parking 20 feet from corner. Any comment, Councilor Noonan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thanks Superintendent Houdon for the report and I would urge him, to urge the staffing to continue, to remind the resident that no parking within 20 feet of the intersection. So that's, that's just an ongoing work, Mr. Mayor. So just ask the superintendent to continue on that. Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Councilor Leahy, have a comment? Just a quick question. I noticed today, so are we starting to paint curbs red with 20 feet or 10 feet before intersections? Or, I know, we are, okay. Yellow, okay. All right. Because that came up before and I thought we weren't doing it, but now we are doing it, so we're not doing it. They had a big cleanup in back central.
Sorry, yes.
And that was part of the list that said painting curb for no parking reasons so close to the intersection. So I was happy to see that because, I mean, I know it's not going to last forever here in New England, but it is a good start, so.
Through Mr. Manager to Mr. Machado?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So it's not the red on the curb today, what they did for the back central neighborhood attack, as we were calling it, is they're painting yellow, there's like some yellow markings 20 feet from the curb so that PD can see if they're parked within there. But it's not, it's not on the curb itself, it's on the street. But it's not, it's not on the curb itself, it's on the street. Yeah. There's some pictures, I believe, available online from what they did today.
Your answer, Councilor Leahy, Mr. Manager.
And that was just, what we're trying to do is trying to take small bites of different neighborhoods to see how it could work. Some of the smaller streets we're concentrating on, we were talking to Council Scott, you know, Floyd, Kinsman, Lyons, I think Council Mercy may have called on this as well, but just trying to get some of our equipment down some of these smaller streets. Three weeks ago on Saturday, Shaun, excuse me, Assistant City Manager and I were talking about it, and it is a challenge on those small streets. Our equipment is so big that I believe PD helped us with this to line it, to make sure that, you know, most everybody moved their vehicles in a timely manner. I think we cleaned out 18 storm catch basins, were able to get down there, blow it out, clean everything out. And our sign department was over there making sure that 20 feet down with with yellow striping, which once again, striping, I hope.
Yes.
To make sure that that, that's something that we want to concentrate on in a small bite to see how we can get that accomplished. So it was a little bit of a trial. From all accounts right now, it's working well. We will be looking to do it in continuation. And it really got an opportunity for those streets that haven't seen street sweepers, simply because you just can't get them down there. But opening up those streets at that time, hopefully the, that neighborhood will will see it and will continue taking that small bite of the apple throughout different segments of the city.
I just wanted to say, I went over there today and everybody would have their own jobs going on, it was great. People in the neighborhoods are extremely happy to see it. Sign department was doing a great job, so everything was working well, well coordinated today. So, thank you.
Councilor Kishia.
Thank you, Mayor Chow. Through you to the manager, do we know what streets we're going to do this on? Because my concern is always about future maintenance. We buy all these things, we do all these great things, but we don't really have a maintenance plan afterwards. So when we paint these yellow, is it something we're going to do every year? Or is it something that we're just looking at to do one time to just to get people into the habit and then we're not going to maintain it? Because as we look forward with all the linear feet of painting in this city, we know a couple of things we've learned from this council is that we don't have enough employees painting crosswalks, long lines, fog lines, and this is more infrastructure we're adding that, and maybe it's just something you're just trying to train people into and we're going to leave it at that. But I'm just wondering, have we talked to all the neighborhoods and put this together? And I know it's not popular to say this, but at this time, when we add more infrastructure, with it comes maintenance. It's like the monuments. Everybody loves the ribbon cutting, everyone goes out there, this is great, hooray, hooray, hooray. Well, now we have so many of them we can't take care of, and they just overgrow. So I'm very worried that as we add more and more painting to the city, do we have a future plan in process that will cover the painting? That's all.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through the manager, through the manager, through the council. Counselor, yes, we are looking at that. We targeted that area simply because of the parking enforcement issues and problems and challenges we've been having in that area. But you're right, with the linear feet, the crosswalks, as we all know, we've been on a holding pattern in crosswalks, we still have another four to five more days left of getting our crosswalks completed throughout the city of Lowell. That particular piece, Council, would be, it would be my hope that we are pushing out per this council's thoughts and requests and, and we were doing one-year contracts. That is, that is wrapping itself up. We're looking for that three-year contract where we'll be able to properly plan. So something along the line, Councilor, about the, those corners, we would probably, let's just take the Back Central Street area for now. We have other places in Centerville that we would need to do this as well, as well as the Highlands and whatnot. But in this matter, my intention would be for the future days coming, future year coming, that would be wrapped into that, that particular proposal. Now, we also have the ability to increase the amount of individuals we have in our sign department, which we probably need to do as well. But with that type of, with with the parking enforcement, we're trying to concentrate in those areas where plowing, public safety vehicles, being able to turn onto a street, that's what we're, that's where we're concentrating on. But I would want to pick it up, like as you stated, within our long lines, within crosswalks that we are still catching up on.
Again, I'm not disagreeing with the idea. Last time we opened a bid from the line, long line painting companies, we were all in sticker shock here and we went, are they painting these with gold or is it? Because remember the differences in, and obviously it came in a lot less than what was being proposed. Now we're adding more infrastructure and I'm very concerned that as we watch taxes go up and all these things go up, people have to understand that there's a cost with all of this. And I don't know that drivers shouldn't understand, you shouldn't park in crosswalks and we have to paint going across things. But, I mean, does yellow mean any different than a crosswalk that goes across a street that they're parking in the middle of? I don't know, but, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I'd just like to thank the manager, the assistant manager, DPW Parks, Wastewater, everybody that was involved in the cleanup today in Back Central. It came up as a conversation between the manager and myself just around, how can we get down there with how tight these streets are and kind of do it in one fair swoop without, you know, disturbing the neighborhood over and over again? The area that the lines were painted are only on Kinsman Street, I believe, there's only about four corners that are marked off. They're corners that are, you know, the road is almost a single-lane road, almost. So it's really, if anyone parks on those corners, you really cannot even make the turn left or right on the street. So I would say they're kind of like training markings. I mean, just to really, you know, to really drive it forward to the residents that we're going to enforce there, hopefully. So there's lots of other areas, I mean, that we could mark off, but like I said, these were, these are areas that are repeat offenders and, and I think they just did a wonderful job doing this neighborhood. And I hope it's a pilot that we move on and do another four blocks, four blocks in the tight areas where you can't get these vehicles down. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I just wanted to say thank you very much for, for the report and the work on enforcing this. This is something that's come up at pretty much every neighborhood group I've been to at one time or another. It's an issue across the city. And with with Councilor Scott's point about training wheels, basically, I was kind of looking at this and wondering, do we off, do we also issue warnings to people instead of a straight citation? Because the other side of the complaints we've gotten at neighborhood meetings is, I parked there all the time and now I get a ticket. Let's see, okay, well, you know, there's got to be some way to kind of split the difference there. So do we issue warnings for this and do we track those warnings? Because I don't think it'd be unreasonable to issue a warning to somebody who parks in front of their house, for example, and thinks they're, doesn't think they're doing anything wrong and just give them a heads up that, hey, you don't want to do this and, you know, you will get a ticket if you're back here next time.
Council, I would think that with the, with the market, the pavement markings we have now, that probably wouldn't constitute a warning, you know? We have not instituted in the superintendent, when, when we need to, during the winter months, they will tow, but I, as far as I know, that the, the patrols that are out there, they, they do a pretty good job. People know they're not supposed to be parked in that manner. But, and today, I would, I would fully expect on those streets that, that have the yellow markings, that if, if a patrol went over there and somebody was parked in that, they would get a ticket. That's what I would expect. Now, if we haven't set the training wheels in motion, that would be on us to kind of remind everybody. But it's really a safety matter with our fire apparatus as well as, it's, it's, it's helping people get in and out of some of those tight streets to take that left to that right. So I wouldn't say we're going to be overly aggressive, but if you're parked within that yellow, I would, I would probably expect to see that you would get a ticket.
Sure, and I fully agree that the yellow on the sidewalk or the curb would constitute that warning. But, you know, if it's only on four corners, there's probably thousands of other corners without them. And that's, those, those are the corners I was thinking of, because, you know, the, these comments go, go back some time from, from various neighborhood groups. And of course, there's no guarantee that somebody say, I parked there all the time, never get a ticket, didn't know I was supposed to be there. It doesn't, none of that is necessarily accurate, but I just wanted to pass that along. Thank you.
Councilor Robinson.
Thank you. First, I'd like to say thank you to LPD. I've, I've seen an increase in presence. Matter of fact, we were out on a neighborhood walk in Centerville. And while we were out on the walk over by Aiken, we actually saw a car parked right up on the corner and get a ticket, thankfully. I mean, and this was in a location that everyone knows, there's no way you could justify parking. Some of Lowell, Centerville especially, again, it's, even recently, we struggle daily with some of those side streets. If you're heading, say, northbound on Bridge Street, everything on your left-hand side especially, trash trucks, recycling, they can't get down. There's missed pickups, I get the calls on missed pickups, come to find out, cars on the corners, the drivers can't make the turns, never mind the fire. And, and within, what, we're in September, maybe a month and a half, it's going to be challenging for FedEx and UPS drivers to try to start getting around with holiday deliveries. So I mean, some of those tight streets, again, anything we can do, and, and where are we as far as, I know we've had conversations in the past, where are we with trying to expand upon our parking enforcement offices going out into some of these neighborhoods that are very tight, like Back Central, Lower Highlands, Centerville, certain parts? I think if we could get parking enforcement potentially to start going out and ticketing cars that they see, I don't know if that's something that needs to be ironed out with the Law Department, but I know there has been some consideration and discussion in the past on that. And, and anything we can do in these tight, small areas, I think would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Councilor Mercy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be brief because I think this is a very important issue. There's nothing more frustrating when you're trying to get out onto a main street and cars are parked right on the corner, so you practically have to be out in the line of fire, more or less, before you can, you know, be safely admitted onto the street. So that is a very important issue. But just for the record, people that are listening, in, in calendar year 2022, there were 532 citations issued. And since January 1st up until maybe a month ago, 220 citations were issued for parking right up to the corner. So I'm grateful and a lot of work has been put on by the Police Department, so I want to thank them as well very much. We don't usually do that and the chief is like collapsing because he can't believe it, but we're very grateful. Thank you.
Councilor Kishia, do you have a follow-up question or comment?
Yes, one more thing about the line painting stuff, just to the manager, the Assistant City Manager, when is Boyleston Street going to be done?
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure on the exact date, but in talking to Liz today, we have, they have five or six more nights of work and we'll, they'll all be completed. Provide, yeah, weather permitting.
Can you call them in the morning and tell them to get to it? That's a school over there that's been done. Can you tell them, let's hit it before Friday and make sure that that's done? Because it's a danger over there with people trying to cross the school and everything else. And when they put the treatment on the road, they just kind of left it.
They could be hitting it tonight.
I think it may be two different contracts. I don't know if it's the same contract, could be the people who did the road, it's their contract to paint it and not the contract that you're talking about.
Hmm, okay. We'll check on that and get back to you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on the enforcement of parking 20 feet from the corner? No other comment. We go to the next motion response. This is on the alphabet E, develop and implement signage along Riverwalk. Councilor Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, thank you to the, the manager and his team for the quick action on this one. You know, getting the response back before we read the motion is, is always a fun thing. I agree with the strategy that putting these signs at entrances is the way to go. I did have some, some folks tell me that they were walking on the Riverwalk and had people riding at them on motorized scooters, e-bikes, that kind of thing. And, you know, they didn't think the signs were going to stop it, but at least with a sign, it gives the potential for some other escalation if it needs to happen. So I appreciate you putting them out and, you know, look forward to see how that goes.
Mr. Mayor, through you to the manager, thank you for the report. Is the chief here?
Mr. Manager to the chief, Councilor.
Good evening, Chief Hudon. Could you just outline, we obviously have an issue in the city with these dirt bikes, pulling wheelies, masked up, can barely see their eyes. Could you just go over the policy on, with the departments? I've read through this, but I'm not too sure on some of the things. Could you just go over what the policy is for an officer when they see this happening and what your policy is on how we're going to correct this issue?
So the main thing to take from this is that when an officer sees an infraction such as this, to understand that with dirt bikes, motorcycles, a lot of times they're trying to be taunted into trying to chase. So it may not be a specific policy towards the dirt bike. What would happen is, in the officer's discretion, if they were to go to stop it, our issue isn't if they're compliant and they stop, the question is, is what happens if they decide not to stop? We're talking about generally, and I know the public would hate to hear this, they're generally speaking about minor motor vehicle infractions. So what the Lowell Police Department policy is, it deals with when the people are not compliant. And generally speaking, when you're dealing with these types of infractions, you're dealing with a lot of times juveniles who are making bad decisions, who are doing these things. And our, our policy is unless it's for a violent felony or something along those lines, we would not pursue. And that's what the policy outlines. And I'm not sure if that answers your question.
I think it does in a way. My question just comes down to when they see them. It's not so much a pursuit if you put on your blue lights and say, we're here.
Correct.
I know that you're saying that antagonizes them to drive fast and into even more of an endangerment they're in, but at some point, they're looking and some of them are doing some nasty things to your offices and just driving. So it's like, at some point, we have to figure out a different strategy because now it's, it's just growing and growing and growing. And tell you the truth, I have people around me who are just trying to get their licenses and these kids are coming up right beside them, looking in, and it can be a scary moment for any person to see somebody masked, you can barely see their eyes, and they are pulling a wheelie and staring at you in a vehicle. So I've, I've witnessed where officers are sitting on Middlesex Street at the Old Bane and eight of them come flying by, pulling wheelies, just looking over at the officer, doesn't even move. And, and I don't know, is that the policy of the department? Or is it, do, do we still have the radios that we can just pick up and say, hey, they're coming your way? You know, can we try to stop them? Or do we stop traffic and just let them drive down the street and keep people at bay?
So again, to your point, like if you're seeing that Wolfpack mentality, we do get on the radio, we do advise people that they're, they're coming in that direction. We are very limited in what we are able to do to alert the public to, to stop that. To your point about being masked and those things and being able to initiate a stop, there's nothing that says we can't attempt to initiate a stop. And again, one of the, many of the factors that we look at when it goes into is what's the time of day? What's the location? Sometimes if it's in a busy intersection, kids are getting out of school, just the fact that they're going to try to hit the lights to go to make that stop to find out if they're going to be compliant could be a risk that they don't want to take. And it's understandable. And to the fact that I have to commend the officers because they show an incredible amount of restraint to not chase these individuals. I'm sure a lot of you saw recent reports regarding the city of Lawrence. Thankfully, I've, I've had discussions with the state police, they're great partners, they've reached out, I've discussed that operation with them. And as well as the scope of the problem between Lawrence and Lowell. And thankfully, based on what I'm being advised, is we don't have the same level and scope of problem that Lawrence had, which warranted that type of operation. I think if everybody kind of remembers a little bit, a couple of years ago, we had that motorcycle night, which occurred every Tuesday night, where we saw a, a big increase really from these types of incidents happening. I think we're seeing more of the lone one or two motorcycles. I think you're seeing less of the Wolfpack eight, 10 motorcycles, thankfully. And again, it just, I would love to, to pull the leash off these guys, they do a fantastic job and they are very, very restrained in, in putting the public in danger to try to chase them. And again, it comes down to compliant versus non-compliant.
I'm not sure which way the public's more in danger, the way that they're driving by them and... by them or not, and I'm not sold on either way. But we have, in your policy, it says that they can pursue up to 15 miles an hour over the speed limit. So, if, just saying, if every road in the city was 25, which it's not, there are some that even are registered in and higher, but if they were, you could go up to 40 miles an hour, and it's not a high-speed chase. There's no liability to the city because you can engage, from what we're reading in here, is you can engage to stop because someone's driving to endanger in this, you can't pursue. And then it would be up to the supervising officer just to, or to the patrolman, whoever's doing it, to say, "This is unsafe, please stop." But if we're not engaging in the beginning, it just seems like they're just, they drive up sidewalks. Middlesex Street I was driving through on a Saturday, a kid lost control of one of those, hit a parked car, got back on it, went up Elliott Street, which I didn't see, I just saw the cars damaged, hit those two, got off his buddy, picked him up, put him on the thing, went to the hospital, and you guys caught him. But, you know, as a resident, those are our cars, and they're getting damaged by these kids who, he didn't have a license, was just, you know, some of these things are even stolen vehicles. So, how do we, we need to do better. We have to come up with some type of solution. And I guess my last question would just be this. What happens if a resident calls you, you're at the station, and tells you that this dirt bike is coming out of this house?
So, we actually have a tips email, which we've utilized in the past, and our officers will investigate, and if it's, they'll take appropriate action.
So, how many of those have been caught or taken off of these kids without even getting back onto the road?
Anecdotally, I would say there were a couple last year. I don't have specific numbers to that type of a tip this year.
All right. Yeah, I just think that we have a police force that can go after drugs, we can go after everything. I'm sure we can find where some of these are housed pretty quickly and stop them before they even get to the road. But again, I understand that you have to get warrants and stuff like that to get in and touch these things, but if we know where they're parked, then I hope that would...
And to your point, Counsel, I appreciate that. We do, we have done a regional task force last year, and they oftentimes are maybe not even in our jurisdiction, right? A lot of things we hear, they're talking about storing them in some of these storage units. And again, that becomes a challenge in identifying the units and which one, and taking the appropriate action to them. But the data does suggest that they are out there trying to do this safely, to make sure that they're getting them when they can, but not putting the public in danger.
So, you keep referencing last year. Did we do that this year?
So, 2023, to date, we've issued 24 operating to endanger citations, four moped-scooter citations, 21 moped-scooter dirt bikes have been towed. And I know the other issue that the council has mentioned, the manager's mentioned, is the bicycles downtown. And we've also, you know, to that point, we've also seized 42 bicycles. And especially during the Folk Festival, that was a concern of ours. Based on last year, we had over 100 instances where officers turned bicycles away from that footprint to, and educate the...
I'll just leave you with this. I hope we give them more of the leash rather than tighten the leash.
Any other comments or questions by any of the counselors? Thank you, Chief, for being here.
Thank you, Mr.
The last motion response of the night is the alphabet R. This is an update on policy, mayoral portrait. Counselor Robinson and Counselor Scott would like to make a comment or respond to this. Counselor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We brought this forward, this actually came out originally in 2020 by Council Mayor Samaras, former Mayor Samaras. He brought it forward, but it did not actually go forward for a vote. I've been speaking with Steve Stoll. He would like to see this move forward as a policy. It helps him, you know, in the discussion about where things should be placed, and it gets to be this controversy. And, I mean, it's not a big issue, but it's something that needs to be figured out. It did have, we did have a discussion in the Rules Subcommittee. It was brought forward. One of the ideas brought forward there was to, you know, provision to reserve a space for current counselors that are still serving, that were former mayors. And that's something we'd like to see incorporated into it. We welcome any, you know, feedback on that for anyone that wants to provide any now, if you have feelings about whether or not former mayors should have a spot reserved on that main wall. But I would just suggest we refer back right now to the Rules Subcommittee, just to have further discussion.
Do you want to make a motion to refer to the Rules Subcommittee by Counselor Scott, second by Counselor Janess, on favor of the I post-it note, I have it, motion is carried. Any other discussion on this? Any comments? Hearing none, that completes the motion responses. Need a motion to accept and place and file by Counselor Drinkwater, second by Counselor Janess, on favor of the I post-it note, I have it, motion is carried. We now go to Section 4, which is the report of the Subcommittee, and you just mentioned that Counselor Scott, the Rules Subcommittee, who would like to, is that just, you both in there, Counselor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That was a good segue, having the last motion response reference the Rules Subcommittee. We did meet last week before the regularly scheduled City Council meeting. The first thing we discussed was a comprehensive review of the existing City Council rules in light of the change from 9 to 11 councillors. This is actually a process we started back in March of last year. And then it kind of fell by the wayside, and then there was some upheaval in the Law Department, things changed. And then we finally got back all together to review and go through those changes. We were joined by Solicitor Williams, and so we were able to have a good conversation back and forth about the things that we felt needed to change, and, you know, asked him for some suggestions on how to word some things and change some stuff. And he took that all under advisement. He's going to work with his team and bring back that packet of changes for the Rules Subcommittee to review and take up once again, and then it'll come back to the full council for approval so we can finally get those rules updated. The second thing we talked about was the mayoral portrait policy. As referenced by Counselor Scott earlier, I think she did an excellent job summing up that conversation, so I think we can leave it at that. Thank you very much.
Any other comments or questions on this report? Counselor Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did bring up a motion on, at the Rules Subcommittee, and I firmly believe, and I added Section D to 1. D, "The mayoral portrait shall be of the mayor only, and no other family members or pets." That was my motion. Because there should be a standard. I mean, what are we going to have, a family portrait next time someone's a mayor? I mean, I don't think so. I mean, if you want to have a family portrait, put one in your living room, but it doesn't belong in here. And then I would like someone to oversee, I did add an E to that. "Mayoral portrait shall be governed and overseen by the manager's office, whoever you deem necessary or yourself to oversee it." The reason I say these things is because one day I came up looking for my portrait. It was completely gone. I couldn't find it. It was down the hall and like around the corner. And in my place was another city councillor's portrait that not even is a sitting city councillor, but does not even live in this city, and does not have his face facing the portrait. So, I thought that was rather odd. And it was orchestrated by a, and I'm not mentioning any names, but by a farmer assistant to a mayor that was in City Hall orchestrating the whole thing. I thought that was wrong. That person had no right in this building, never mind ordering DPW to come in and start rearranging it. Absolutely not acceptable. And so, that's why I made these particular motions. We have to have decorum here. There's got to be rules. This is the Rules Subcommittee. These are the things that only make sense, so that's why I put that in there. Thank you.
Counselor Gishia?
Mr. Mayor, I attended that Subcommittee also, and Counselor Scott had brought a motion forward that I thought the council should vote on so that they could have an edit also to it. And it was Rule 5 under the summer schedule piece, just to remove the September meeting piece, so it would go back to regular meeting. And that didn't get a second, but I still would like, if we're going to put together a piece where we're going to change the language in here, the council to vote on removing September from the first paragraph in Rule 5. And what that would do is it would just put it back to, you'd have June, July, and August, and then September, we would go back to regular session. And Counselor Scott didn't get a second for that, but I would like, I don't know if this is the proper time to make the motion, the clerk would...
Sure, you can make a motion on the floor to...
So, I'd like to make a motion on the floor for Rule 5, remove the September from the first paragraph in Rule 5.
Motion by Counselor Gishia, second by Counselor Scott. Do we need a rule call on this one? Mr. Clerk, rule call, please.
No.
Counselor Noon?
No.
Counsel Robinson?
No.
Counsel Rourke?
Yes.
Counsel Yum?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater?
No.
Counsel Gishia?
Yes.
Counsel Janess?
No.
Counsel Leahy?
No.
Motion fails.
No other comments? No other comments on the Subcommittee report? And your motions from the Subcommittee report would be adopted in the motion to accept the report as a report of progress, including the motions by Counselor Robinson, second by Counselor Leahy, on favor of the I post-it note, I have it, motion is carried. That completes the Subcommittee report. We now go through the City Council motions. Again, I know this has been a long meeting, but just to remind the public, these are motions from the previous meeting. These are not new motions. Motion 5.1, Counselor Gishia requests City Manager look into feasibility of demolishing the Smith Baker Center. Do we have a second on this motion? Second by Counselor Robinson. Counselor Gishia?
Motion speaks for itself.
Thank you, Counselor. No other discussions? Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. I know we have, we had, we had a presentation, I think it was last Tuesday, the fellow that's doing the TDI. I mean, I know, I've been in Smith Baker when I was younger, and the architecture in there is probably some of the nicest in the city. I hate to see even these conversations, but it's a real conversation. It is something that we have to figure out, what are we going to do, if anything? And if not, I think this is the end result. I don't know how aggressively we pursued and looked for any public private or any kind of options that we have to either restore or transform or repurpose that facility, but I would hope before we look into the demolition, we would try everything possible to try to see if there's any interest, whether it's five or six organizations that could come together. Because again, I think this is a good motion. I think it's in a state of decay that's way beyond the scope of our capability, but I think aggressively, and as like a Hail Mary, if we could try to reach out to anyone that might be interested to see if there's a prayer of hope to try to save that place. Thank you.
Counselor Gishia, your motion already spoke for itself.
I figured it was gonna, but, you know, at this point, I guess I have to clarify it at this point because in government, you see buildings like this that fall into such disrepair. It's been like this for 20, over 21 years. It's in such disrepair, there's hazardous materials in there that have to be removed. It's rained in there, the building's falling down, we can't use the sidewalk over there, and people today were parked all along that area when we had an employee day over there. And it says, at the meters of all bags, saying, "Please don't park here because stuff's falling from the building." Even if you repurpose that, it's going to be well over the cost that we can afford. We need space in the city for housing in other areas. And when you look at it, it's probably going to cost somewhere a little bit, about $3 million probably to take it down. And then when you look at the building, you're seeing that, we can all just take a vote and let it sit for another 20 years. I'm okay with it, but it's doing nothing for housing shores, it's doing nothing for economic development around a beautiful city hall. When we look at economic development, we have to understand that we're not all driving 1909 fire trucks. At some point, things, we let fall apart, and that's our fault. Today, when we look at that building, it's our fault it's like this. It's government's fault that they didn't take care of it. But now it's in such disrepair, we're putting our firefighters, our police officers at risk with a big X on the side. If something happens in it, they have to make a decision whether they can get in or not. If that thing catches on fire or something, you're going to have a blaze over there that's going to be uncontrollable. And we have to, at some, become responsible for the things that we have in the city, and that's one building that, I think when you see the report, I haven't, no idea what they're going to write, but I would say that it's probably not feasible to remodel as much as we love something. We can't go back to 20 years old as much as I want to. I can't be 20 again.
Any other comments or questions on this motion? Hearing none, on the favor of the I, you post it, no, the I's have it, motion is carried. The next motion is 5.2, Counselor Gishia requests City Manager move Halloween to the last Saturday in October. Do we have a second?
Well, I'll have a second for discussion, but that is just this year.
Second by Counselor Mercier?
Yes, and to the maker of the motion, you're just referring to this, this year, right? Because if you say every year, I probably wouldn't agree with it every year, but the way that it sits now this year, if your Saturday would be the 28th instead of the 31st, which the 31st is on a Tuesday, and we have a city council? So, go ahead, I'm sorry. I just want a clarification.
So, when you go out to neighborhoods and you talk to people, this came up with a resident. I don't really have a position on this. My child is much older than the age of going on trick-or-treat, but today he may be able to. It was more or less a resident who said they work all day, they try to get home, by the time they get home, they feed their child supper, it's around 6:00, 6:15. And that's what they were saying, is there a way that we could move it to a Saturday and enjoy it? Whatever the will is of the body, I am okay with. I just brought something forward for a discussion that would be there. I think it's too early to do it for this year, just because, I mean, too late to do it for this year? Because here we are, it's, you know, middle of September, and people make plans, but it's something just for discussion, and if people are against it, I'm very okay with either way. I don't have kids that do this, so. It was more so for a resident who asked that this could happen so that they could, and then other people had explained, you know, what about the people who work on the weekends, and they can't do it? And then other people say, you know, there's this and that. So, there's another side to every discussion, so that, it was just something to bring to the body, have a discussion. If no one wants to do it, I am more than okay with it.
Counselor Yum?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I for one will not support this motion because simply that if you are tired, come back from work, you can turn off the light, the front porch light. So, the children and the parent knows that if the house front porch not lit, that means nobody home, and they not venture into that home. I do not like the fact that now we kind of regulating when you can trick-or-treat, you know, and it's not fair because the children are looking forward, they buy the costume, they want to go out. I remember when my children are young, we went out, we had fun. So, for us to regulate that you can't have a Halloween on a Halloween night, it's not American way. Thank you.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As a parent of trick-or-treating age kids, I feel compelled to weigh in on this one. And certainly in my house, we've looked at the calendar, and when Halloween does fall on a weekend, I think most would agree that those are the best Halloweens. However, my concern with moving the trick-or-treating date to the weekend is that generally, a lot of events don't get scheduled for October 31st in the evening because it's expected that that's when trick-or-treating will take place. The final Saturday in October, I know many people are busy with other plans. I looked at my family's own calendar for that particular Saturday, and there are sports events scheduled and things like that. A lot of people, a lot of organizations simply don't plan on keeping that evening open for kids to trick-or-treat. So, I'm sure... open for, for kids to trick or treat, so I'm sure my house is like many others, in that, um, families might be occupied on, on that particular date, so I don't think it would be, um, wise to, to move that for this year, um, in addition to it being somewhat short, short notice. So, it also pains me that, uh, Halloween will fall on a, a Tuesday evening, which presents some conflicts, but I do think, uh, keeping it on, on the 31st would be the, the best, uh, option, uh, for the kids, so, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel. I, I sense that this is a, is a popular topic to talk about with Halloween around the corner, so I'm gonna go from my left to right. Counsel Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I appreciate Counsel Gishia bringing this motion in, because it certainly has generated quite a bit of conversation online and in person. Um, I've heard from a lot of people on both sides of this, uh, whether it's a good idea, whether it's a bad idea, whether we should have trick or treating every night in October, um, you know, I, I've heard it all. Um, so because of that, I, I really think that we don't, we can't really take action on this tonight, particularly for this year. I think, I think there needs to be some more discussion and outreach to, uh, to various community groups about this. Um, I, I don't know how we would go about that process, but I just know there's, there's a lot of feelings on this one in the community, um, and, uh, I think, I would think it'd be too short notice to, uh, pull the trigger on this right now. Thank you.
Counsel Leahy, I don't think you trick or treat anymore, so do you want to make a comment?
No, I'm going out Tuesday, so I'll vote to keep it on Tuesday.
Counsel Mercia.
Well, here's my dilemma, okay? I love to have it on a Saturday, so I'd be home, and I enjoy Halloween, to see them come to the house with their scary costumes on, or their ballerina clothes. I think if, they're beautiful, and I get all excited, and I only give candy not only to the children, but to the parents as well. I give a dog bone biscuit to the dogs that they bring along, so I really, it's something that I love. Now I'm seeing that it's on a Tuesday, so now I'm gonna be here, and I'm gonna miss all that. That's gonna be... Oh, yeah, we could cancel a city council meeting, so I could be home passing out candy, 'cause I usually buy four bags, because I think that they have a bus at the end of the street that they let out, and all the kids come down the street. I really believe it. I swear to God. And I don't mind, 'cause I enjoy it, and I love to give out candy, but I don't know how I'm gonna do it if I'm here. I'm gonna miss that.
Counsel Law.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think Counsel Gishia for, uh, bringing, uh, resident, uh, or parent concerned regarding when we should, uh, trick or treat. Um, I think, uh, given that, um, we are not doing, um, to make a decision for this year, I would say more time need to, uh, be, you know, having discussion on this, uh, maybe reaching out again, like Counsel Janess. Don't know how you're gonna do it, um, you know, just to, to get more input, uh, as to where, what day we should do it. Um, I can tell you this, particularly with the, um, uh, Asian community, the October's month, so, so full of, uh, wedding, uh, anniversaries, and, you know, just about every restaurant hosted, and they can't wait for Saturday to come. So, I'm telling you that some parent or some kid is gonna be really mad that their parent not taking them trick or treat, rather, uh, they go into a, anniversary parties or something else. Uh, so, I'm telling you, if you have got a conversation with the Asian community, uh, a lot of kids now can be really happy with their parent. You don't want that, that to happen in, in a family. Thank you.
I don't think Counsel Robinson trick or treat either, but you still wanna make a comment?
I would just suggest, uh, I think my colleagues touched on it, I've heard both sides. I don't know if this warrants maybe a poll on the city's website for next year. Uh, no action's gonna be taken, obviously, and, uh, it's good to know that we're meeting on that Tuesday night, so I'll make the motion that we don't have the meeting on Halloween.
Yeah, second.
Motion by Counsel Robinson to not have a meeting on... Was, was the...
We amended it.
That's, that's true. We'll, we'll deal with Counsel Gishia's motion first.
Okay.
Then we'll come, see how that go, then we'll come back to visit your, your motion, Counsel Robinson.
Sounds good. Thanks.
Counsel Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I personally am somewhat of a traditionalist. I, I want the holiday to stay on the, on the day of the holiday, um, but I understand Counsel Gishia's point, bringing this forward. There are a lot of parents that prefer it on a Saturday. I think when my kids were young, I'd have to think back that maybe that would've been a lot easier. Um, we're, we're not gonna take action, it doesn't sound like on this tonight anyways. Um, I would agree with, um, Counsel Robinson's suggestion that the manager take control of this and put a survey out, um, to find out if there's any interest in changing the traditional holiday. Thank you.
Counsel Yum.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, rather than, um, cancel the Tuesday council meeting, we can adjourn early. Uh, Counsel Mercia, we, you can make a motion to adjourn around 8 o'clock, so you can go out and pass the candy.
Halloween is over at 8 o'clock. They're all in bed or something. 8 o'clock.
Okay. Thank you, Counsel Yum. I'm going back to Counsel Gishia one more time before...
I, I don't want Counsel Robinson to turn into a pumpkin, so, uh, stay away from that one. But since Counsel Scott would like, likes to tradition, I will withdraw the motion if, if the second is okay with that. I would withdraw it.
Okay. Motion by Counsel Gishia to withdraw the motion, second by, uh, Counsel Robinson at that time. Thank you, Counselor. And I just wanna add, you know, I, I appreciate you bringing up that, that motion, just as fun as it was to discuss it, but, uh, there were some real concerns by, by parents in the community that was brought up to me, um, a couple, a couple years ago, and I can see really both sides, three sides, all sides of people's interest to have it on Halloween, uh, do before, um, early, or, or what have you, just like all the comments by the city councils here tonight, but, um, if the motion was on the floor, Counsel Gishia, I would not have voted for it, uh, because I think that the most important thing, um, I do not want Jack O'Lantern to go after me. All right? I would never touch Halloween. Uh, with that said, would now go to, uh, Counsel Robinson.
Um, yeah, that, that, so, I would like to make that motion. I mean, just listening to my colleagues even, it, it's, a lot of my colleagues have younger children, other colleagues enjoy being home, and, and trick or treatment starts, what, 5:00, 6:00 PM, so it's, it's kinda tough, so I would make the motion to cancel, um, the meeting on Halloween.
Motion by Counsel Robinson. That was second by Counsel Mercia. Uh, we will do, um, a roll call, but I just wanna make a brief comment, doesn't think people are gonna comment on it. Um, I will not, uh, vote for it. What I wanted to say, um, earlier was that, um, my kids, when they were small, I did have a challenge to make it back on time, to take them to a treating, and there was a couple times that I missed it. Um, I feel guilty, obviously. Uh, my wife took some great photos for me, and I think it's, uh, one of the things of parenthood, um, is to making those life choice decisions, and sometimes, you know, you remember those things that, uh, you miss, and you remember those times that, uh, you were there for the kids, and I believe that many, uh, parents out there, they might not have a choice as we do. They might be working, or there might be a way out of the city, they might not have a choice to miss those work. Um, so I'm gonna, uh, not vote for it, I'm gonna, um, you know, if I had to be here, I would be here. Um, you know, that's the way, uh, life and holidays work. Uh, Counsel Gishia.
I am gonna not vote, support it either, because I think we have a lot of work, and we should invite the public to come here, and, and the mayor can have a citation where we give out candy to all the public, and that takes the first hour anyway, so by the time it's over, we'll be fine.
All right. Uh, Counsel Scott.
Thank you.
Sure. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counsel Mercia.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Present.
Uh, Counsel Robinson.
Yes.
Counsel Rourke. Counsel Scott.
Yes.
Counsel Yum.
Yes.
Mayor Chow.
No.
Counsel Drinkwater.
Yes.
Counsel Gishia.
No.
Counsel Janess.
Yes.
Counsel Leahy.
No.
Motion passes.
Yes, yes.
Thank you, and, uh, happy early Halloween to everyone.
We'll see the kids.
The, uh, well, that's a good, uh, discussion. The next motion is 5.3, motion by Counsel Gishia, request city manager update the city council on an engineering study, raiding all sidewalks within the city, second by Counsel Yum. Counsel Gishia.
Motion speaks for itself.
Thank you, Counselor. No other discussion, on favor of the eye opposed, say no, the eyes haven't, motion is carried. Motion 5.4, Counsel Gishia, request city manager begin process of purchasing, saying John Dock for classroom space, second by Counsel Robinson. Counsel Gishia.
I think this is a valuable piece of property for us in a time where we could gain valuable class space, and, and I think that we should be the first ones trying to purchase this for the needs of the students in the city, and it would give us a time to maybe renovate other buildings, we could put kids in that one temporarily, and renovate other areas, and then put it back. Um, Mr. Manager, do you have a comment on that?
Mr. Manager.
Uh, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. Counselor, that is currently out for RFP, uh, and...
September 26th.
September 26th, it's been out for RFP, so it is something that we have been reaching out to, uh, interested landowners, um, to see if they'd be interested in replying back to the RFP. Uh, for the purchasing of, of land, that's how the city has to do that. Um, I would absolutely agree with you. We could possibly go buy any piece of land, but that's not always how that works in this manner. So, um, the RFP has been out there, and it's the ability for, um, anybody that owns land, whether it be the Archdiocese, or any, any resident, would have that opportunity to respond to that, and, uh, hopefully would be able to come to terms.
What's the likelihood of them responding to it? Have we been in discussion so that they do respond to it, so that we can purchase that?
It's my understanding that the, that we've reached out, and that's probably all I could say about any of the RFPs that would be coming in, any of the responses.
Thank you.
Any other comments? No other comments, on favor of the eye opposed, say no, the eyes haven't, motion is carried. The next motion is 5.5, Counsel Scott, request city manager provide a report on the current HVAC conditions across our municipal building and plans, uh, for repair. Actually, that reminds me, um, there's, uh, I have a similar motion that is...
516.
5.16, so it needs a motion to, um, suspend the rule and take that out, order a bundle, bundle of Counsel Scott's, motion by Counsel Robinson, second by Counsel Leahy. Uh, motion 5.16 is a motion by myself, request city manager review and plan for improving and repairing school building HVAC systems. Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was actually, um, when I put the motion through, I started it off saying school buildings, and then I decided to expand it to all municipal buildings, just to, to get a, a better overview of where we stand right now, as far as our, um, ARPA funding, ESSER funding for repairs that have been completed, um, what's in the works, what open work orders we have right now. I know back in, I think it was around 2013, a complete study had been done of all the HVAC systems across all the schools, so I'm just really curious to see where we stand right now, today. Thank you.
Counsel Robinson.
Thank you, um, and I'd like to thank my colleague for bringing this forward. Actually, tonight on the, I think it was Wbz or Channel 5 News, there was a report on, they were looking at Baltimore and the issues they're having with schools and HVAC, and, and also Massachusetts, so I think it's kinda timely. Um, I know there has been serious commitment made and serious efforts made, and I know we're, we're continuing to try to get things under control as far as, you know, automation and the controls for all our buildings, which is gonna be multi-phase, but I think this is a great, uh, motion. Thank you.
Counsel Gishia.
Mr. Mayor, through you to either the manager or the CFO, I know at one point we got a report on how much, uh, funds were spent in the buildings from the ARPA money during that period of time. Do you remember what that number was, roughly? I know it was in one of the reports, but I just...
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. Counselor, we can include that, um, with the response to Counsel Scott, as well as Mayor Chow, in regards to the actual dollar figures. Um, this would be a good thing to discuss in regards to the, uh, preventative maintenance that we have been pushing, as well as the mono controls. We just sent out, uh, 24 contracts, um, just last week, uh, for the contracts to go out, so I think this is, uh, once again, this is another opportunity for the council, um, and we'll get this to you as, as soon as possible. We've been working on this, um, hopefully within the next couple of weeks, so you can see what, uh, what has been happening through our DPW, um, through the superintendent of schools, but I think it could, it could be a, a great report, um, as to what has been happening, but we're still with the challenges to go, to move forward. So, if it's okay with the council in regards to this, we can include the amount of money that, um, has been spent on both the ESSER side, as well as the ARPA side, as well as some of the capital pieces. I wanna stress that this council moved forward on, um, I'm looking over to $2.3 million, rings, rings, uh, 2.33, uh, of capital monies that has been spent, and this is all pushing, uh, hopefully, uh, a less disruptive, disruptive school year. Uh, starting last year, I think, uh, it was a lot less disruptive than it was in years prior, so, um, under the guidance of our commissioner, as well as the Assistant City Management Shadow, we're pushing this out, and with Catherine Moses over in there in Energy, we're really doing a lot of thing, a lot of great things for our heating systems, and we've been talking about the air conditioning issues and challenges that we also have. So, uh, if that's okay, I'd love to take that, uh, add the fact of the, the dollar figure being spent, and hopefully, I'm gonna push for the next two weeks to have that back to this council, two to, maybe three weeks, 'cause it's a fairly extensive report, if that's okay with the makers of the motion.
I think that's perfect, because as, as we look at it, it should have a progress report over the last year, at the same time as you're looking at the future report, because that determines what we've actually all have been talking about all this time. As we have put these motions in over and over again, now it has a, a fair report on what the progress we've made and where we're going, going forward, so I, I welcome to see that if everyone is okay with that. Thank you.
Counsel Robinson.
Thank you. Um, something that came to mind to me, I don't know how familiar you are, um, I was reading recently, the state changed some of the, uh, guidelines and regulations. I know the previous council, uh, voted to allocate 25% of our host community impact fee from the cannabis industry in the community towards facility upkeep and maintenance. Um, they recently changed the regulations surrounding that host community impact fee now, and it was signed in. They put an eight-year sunset clause on the host community impact fee, as well as now we're gonna be required to, to provide pretty much receipts to justify that 3% charge to the industry in our community. Um, I don't know how that might impact some of the work that we've been doing, um, but also do we maybe start to look towards, if we only have eight years or however many years and the clock is ticking, do we have a discussion around maybe doubling that percentage to allocate, because once it's done, it's done. So, that would at least allow us to, to put a little bit more resources aside for our facilities and maintenance. I, I, I just think it's something that we as a council and, and the administration might wanna start considering, because that 3% fee, whatever that is, that we've, uh, 25% been allocated, do we get aggressive and, and, and look to increase that, because it is gonna sunset right out? Thanks.
Thank you. Um, through you to the manager. In the report, um, could you also include, if you can, can we find out where the ESSER money went? And I know that, um, you know, through different motions, that that money was up and down, and I'm not sure where it was all spent, but, um, you know, we, originally, we had an agreement to spend some, a significant amount on controls and, and heating and cooling, so if we could find out where some of that money went, if there's any money left, if we can come back with a, uh, an agreement from the school department to help share with some of the costs, 'cause again, we've all said this, this is one-time money, we're never gonna see again, and if we don't do this now, we're never gonna get caught up. Thank you.
Mr. Manager.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. Counsel, this is a very exciting time, uh, that's why I'm so eager to try to get this out in the next two to three weeks, uh, to share the victory with the councils that have been pushing this since day one. Uh, but from that perspective, Counselor, um, Superintendent Skinner has done a fabulous job. We were just in a meeting, uh, Monday, yesterday, sorry, uh, in having this discussion about just in a meeting Monday, yesterday, sorry, in having this discussion about what needs to be done in those schools and the partnership that is being continued, I would say. And the superintendent is, I think, doing a fabulous job in making sure that that ESSER money, really forging a great partnership. Once again, with the, with the maintenance, the preventative maintenance that has really been pushed over the past 16 months, and I have to give the credit to Mr. Machado as well as Mr. St. Seer to ensure, Mr. Byrne as well, to make sure this is all being done. This is being done because this council has really pushed this as a priority. So hoping to get that full report, financial report, and anything else we can think about it for the council's review. This could be a really major success. I'm not saying that there will not be issues, but I do really truly believe because of this council's intervention with this, last year's heating season, we did better. We did a lot better than we had in the past and our goal is to continue to do that. So I look forward to getting this report back to all of you in the coming weeks.
Any other comments? I just want to thank Mr. Manager, the DPW and Mr. Superintendent as well. When this happened over a week ago, it was, it brought their attention not only to myself or the council body, but also the school committee members and it was citywide. And I think before, you know, when the weather was very hot, it was tolerable. But, you know, as you can tell, the past few weeks, the weather, the climate has been intolerable. It was not just hot, the room temperature that the mom and step was reading, close to 100 degrees. And, you know, normally we would hear issues with a few school buildings, but a couple of weeks ago when schools start, it happened right when schools start when there's not much preparation for it. It was kind of a perfect storm, so to speak, when everything got warm. It started really early. You know, with the climate change and everything, the hardness, the warm weather is going to be more extreme and the cold coming in winter times going to be more extreme as well, I would imagine. So I thank the city manager's office for working on this in an urgently manner. That said, on favors the eye opposed to know the ice have it, motions carry. The next motion is five point six, Council Scott, Council Robinson, Council Gishia request city manager invite the low delegation to a council meeting to discuss and update us on important state issues affecting the city. Who would like to go first? Council Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We made this motion with the idea that this would be a good practice to invite the delegation so that we can have an open line of communication on a fairly regular basis. That can be worked out, what works for everybody involved. But, you know, we can get updates around budget, updates with the state, housing, legislative updates. There's a lot of good legislation that's out there. I know in particular, I'd love to see an update on the one around the public safety, possible changes around funding for that that Senator Kennedy has proposed. I'd love to see, you know, hear more about how we can be partners with him or whoever, you know, has these ideas so that we can show our support when it really benefits the city. I know that it's done in Chelmsford, that the reps have been going there, you know, Rep Gold, former Rep Golden, I'm sure was part of that. So I think it's just a good practice just to get that communication flowing. Thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing none on favors the eye opposed to know the ice have it, motions carry. The next motion is five point seven, Council Robinson request city manager have the proper department provide a report on the installation of the new four-way stop on Aiken Street by La Latcha Park. What process was followed prior to implementation and what will be done to alleviate traffic congestion as a result of this installation? Second by Council Gishia. Second by Council Gishia. Council Robinson?
Thank you. I'm sure everyone here is well aware. It didn't work. It's an absolute nightmare, absolute headache. Traffic's backing up in the mornings and afternoons all the way pretty much to Hovey Park in Centerville. It's, I know it's a 60-day trial, but I don't even know who initiated this process, what the process was, this trial. I mean, it, we can't get that kind of attention on Bridge Street where we have young kids crossing the street to go to school, but yet at the college where these are kids that know how to cross the street. It's a four-way stop wall. You would hope they would know how to cross the street, but I mean, we have police details over there and at the end of the day, it is definitely not the right place, in my opinion, in many residents' opinion. I mean, you come over that Aiken Street Bridge and you come to a dead stop. It's just, it does not really make any sense. And I hope that we can remove this like yesterday. A 60-day trial, I don't think it even is going to take the full 60 days to figure out that that's not a good location for this type of setup. Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. Counselor, yes, we've heard about this one, absolutely. It was a 60-day trial that came in that we always want to consider the safety of all residents throughout the city. This particular piece will be coming down, I believe, sometime next week. And it's been duly noted in regards to what's happening, what's not happening. However, we want to make sure that in the beginning months, that everyone's getting used to crossing. Unfortunately, last year, two folks, two individuals were hit within the crosswalk and there is a little bit of danger in there. Sometimes kids, they're not paying attention. They'll walk right through a crosswalk like it's, they don't have to look left and right. So there, this was a solution or trying to get a solution because of those two individuals that were hit. We all care about that. That's important. But we are talking to the university about trying to work with, they seem to, the college students seem to understand it over at the highway. It doesn't seem to be a problem at all. It's just a problem here. So it is something that we worked through. I've been sitting in it myself just to find out what's going on. It backs all the way up over the Lakeview Ave, so I'm very familiar with this. This will be coming down in days to come. But we do need to continue to look for a solution in that area, which we will do. I've been talking with the traffic engineers to what is next steps. So we'll keep, we'll stay tuned on that.
Any other comments or questions on this motion? Hearing none on favors the eye opposed to know the ice have it, motions carry. The next motion is five point eight, Council Leahy request city manager have the proper department develop a plan to regrade edges of sidewalks, streets that have been washed out due to past heavy rains. Second by Council Mercy, Council Leahy.
Thank you. Motion basically speaks for itself, but this is an issue that came up and it needs to be addressed. Should be dirt cheap for us to do. So, but we're going to have to get some gravel and stone and whatever and try to fill in. I know there's a number of roads. I don't know how you want to handle it if people call in or if we have someone go out on weekends and identify spots, but it is an issue that we should deal with over the next month and try to get some of these washed out gulliways filled in. So either way, thank you.
Council Gishia?
Mr. Manager, could you also look at 35 Reservoir Street? I guess they keep putting loom over there and it washes down and just keeps washing down. If we could put a gravel in there and compact it, then throw the loom on, if we can just look at that corner and see if we can just get something to divert that away. Thank you.
Council Robinson?
We deal with this issue a lot where I work in a, depending where it is, especially if it's on a hill and it's something that's going to continuously get beat, we use trap rock, a mix of trap rock and gravel. So I mean, there are different solutions. If you just throw dirt back into these areas, a loom or small fine particles, it's going to wash out again. So it might be something you look at, different size. Thank you.
No other comments on favors the eye opposed to know the ice have it, motions carry. The next most motion is five point nine, Council Janess request city manager have proper department investigate improvements to regular maintenance along the River Walk on both sides of the river. Second by Council Yen, Council Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This came up because I've heard from a couple of folks about just, you know, things that have, have kind of been let, let go on the River Walk for a while, which is not to say the DPW isn't doing a great job. I know they got a lot of work to do. But, you know, there's, one of your favorite local artists has had a tag there for quite a while. There's some others that have been hanging around for a couple of years at this point. And there are stretches that get overgrown during the summer season, particularly a year like this where we've had so much rain and things have been growing like crazy. The stretch between the boot mills and, and the entry at the Songus Arena there, sometimes that gets pretty grown over and can be a little intimidating to walk is what I've heard, particularly in the evenings. And as well as on the other side of the river, the new sidewalk along VFW, you know, the overgrowth, overgrowth comes and I know that's a state thing, but you know, if we can find ways to really, really keep this up as best we can. We heard earlier about, you know, Mr. Malovich and how, and how he really brought this idea of the River Walk and it's really one of the crown jewels of the city in terms of our open space in my mind. So the more we can do to really showcase that, particularly this time of year, right, when we have a new batch of students coming in or a new batch of, you know, it's just, it's a good time to be out and enjoying these, these areas that we have. So the more we can do to make them shine, I know the residents would really appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing none on favors the eye opposed to know the ice have it, motions carry. The next motion is five point 10, Council Janess request city manager have proper department update on electric vehicle charging infrastructure within a city and any plans for expansion. Second by Council Drinkwater, Council Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This motion comes out of just being in and out of the Roy Garage every day. There are 10 electric vehicle chargers in the Roy Garage at this point. And I've noticed over the past six months that that, their utilization has crept up and up and up. I've on multiple occasions seen all 10 of them in use. And I know obviously adding chargers is very expensive, but one thing that may not be as expensive and, you know, might have some benefits here is all those chargers are signed for either two or four hours of use. However, there are times when people's cars are parked in those spots all weekend. So I don't know if it's something that we can add, ask Laz to add to their list if they've noticed cars are being parked there for long periods of time to, you know, maybe leave a note or reach out to the owners and say, you know, this is a public resource and you got to share it. It's not your dedicated spot. I think that might help. I don't know what's going on in the other garages. I haven't, haven't seen them as frequently, but I'd be interested to know what the, what the utilization looks like on our, our various charges across the city at this point. Thank you.
Council Robinson?
Thank you. I recently saw something, one of the communities in this area, I'm not sure, maybe through you to Ms. Byers Rose, there was a grant or a program through National Grid in one of the local communities. They have these charging stations that they're mounting almost on utility poles now and they look like oversized battery packs and you can pull down the charger itself and plug it into the car. And they interviewed a gentleman that didn't have the means to install. He was a renter. And what this did is they put it in the street and he was able to pull down the charger from this battery pack looking unit that National Grid worked with them on, the surrounding community. They expanded on, I think they went from like eight to 16 now. And he said it allowed him, he said that was a deciding factor on him purchasing an electric vehicle because he was able to access a charging port like pretty much at the foot of his driveway. And he didn't have the means, I don't know if he was a renter or what, to install his own. But there is a local community, there was a grant that National Grid offered. And again, they look like oversized, like battery packs that mount on a utility pole. So they're pretty, you know, small space-saving units that do provide a charge. Thank you.
Maybe that's something that the director of DPD could include and report coming back as well. Any other, Council Yen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question. Are these charges free or the owner will have to pay, you know, swipe the credit card in, in order to, to charge their car?
Through Mr. Manager to DPD Director. Council Janess?
Thank you to my colleague for bringing this up because this was something I meant to mention. The ones in the garage, I know as of right now are free. I don't know who's paying for that electricity, whether it's a grant or whether it's coming out of the city coffers. I don't know if it's the general fund or the parking enterprise fund, but I think that's, it's time we look at that as well. You know, we're, the utilization we're seeing, if we are paying for it, then, you know, that's, that's an issue.
That's the reason I'm raising, Mr. Mayor, because, you know, there shouldn't be a free electricity while all of us have to pay for the parking and pay for gas. I noticed that where the 99 Restaurant is and now they install about six, seven Tesla charger and I know that it's not free. So you put in the credit card and you use it. So if we as a city want to install that, there should be not a free charge, charge station, but people have to pay for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Maybe this, you know, all great questions and comments and I think the manager's office and DP Director could include all these comments and response back. Council Robinson?
Through you to Ms. Byers Rose. It's actually Melrose. I could, I could send you the link. Melrose is the community I was referring to, that National Grid installed pole charges that have a pull-down, pretty much handle that would plug into the car itself.
Ms. Byers Rose?
Catherine Moses is watching this meeting at home and already texted me to tell me that that was a program being run through DPU. It was a pilot program and they actually chose not to continue that program, the one that you were specifically talking about where they can create those pull-down chargers. But that being said, National Grid does have a variety of rebate and incentive programs that might be available that certainly we could look into. And then additionally, the city does have, although the, the units that exist in the garages are currently free of charge, we do have some street EV charging stations and those do require people to pay for, for use. And so there is a model that exists that, that we could transition to.
Council Yen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a kind of follow-up. There is a program, a company who want, it's called Hypercharge. The city can work with them and they installed it and we shared the profit of generating from charging stations. So that's the other, so the city doesn't have to come up with the upfront money. The company installed it and then share the revenue. So that's a program that called Hypercharge. So maybe the city can look into this partnership. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, through you to the manager, this isn't even something that the council should have to okay. It should be something that goes to the management team. There's nothing free. As people are saying free, someone else is paying for this somewhere in the budgets. So I would think that as soon as possible, we can put charging on it, that we charge people for using it so that we can start managing these accounts. That's all.
No other comments or questions on that motion on favors the eye opposed to know the ice have it, motions carry. The next motion is five point 11, motion by Council Janess request city manager have the proper department investigate adding more public trash barrels along Jackson Street and Jackson Street Extension. Second by Council Nguyen. Council Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is, this has come up a few times in, in talking to residents in the area. Just that Jackson Street lacks barrels compared to neighboring streets. And I actually went and counted because I'm on these streets all the time. Jackson Street has four public trash barrels between Central Street and the new intersection at Dutton and Fletcher. If you go down Market or Merrimack, that same stretch from Central to Dutton, there are 10 or 11 barrels publicly accessible. So it's a big difference. There used to be more. There were two next to the canal, just across from the, the new Justice Center, next to the benches there, one at the end of that footbridge and one at the, right at the intersection of Jackson and Canal there. Those get removed sometime during the pandemic, I believe. National Park serviced those barrels and removed them. There was another one that was in front of the Health Center at one point and that was removed as well. So, you know, the ones that are there are overflowing, particularly the one adjacent to the canal, right across from the Charter School there. That one is frequently an issue, as is the one closest to Central Street. They're frequently overflowing. So there's just a clear need for more over there. So if we can do that, that would be great and I know everyone would appreciate it. Thank you.
Council Robinson?
Thank you. Through you to the city manager. I had brought this up, I mean, with, with cultural fund, ARPA money. I think this is an opportunity to utilize some and I think if we bring in maybe the schools in each district and maybe if they're willing to do it, the art teachers specifically, whatever they're comfortable taking for barrels, if we can get an order of 55-gallon metal barrels, designate each of the schools in the eight districts to maybe do some projects with, with art on the barrels, say, over the winter months and roll them all out in the spring. It will give us a good shot to really increase the amount of barrels in the city as well as incorporate and dress them up a little bit utilizing the kids as well as incorporate and dress them up a little bit, utilizing the, the kids to do some art.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. Councilors, I think that, once again, on the 55-gallon drum in the parks is a great idea. Ms. DeRosa is going to look at that to see where we can put that, to see if we can get, I'm using the Robinson School, just up the street there. But also in the downtown, I think that we might, we may have to go with the, the traditional historical black steel with the bonnet on the top, right? To keep the rain out. So I just want to be clear that that, I think downtown on Jackson Street, that is something that we could do. Assistant City Manager, Byas Rose and I have been talking about this, working with a new, new organization, Mass Corps, I believe it was. So that's probably something. But I just want to make sure from the parks perspective, I think that that's something we could work with simply because, and I'm using any one of the schools with, with, with around parks. So Ms. DeRosa will be looking at that to see if we can reach out to the art teachers and to see if it's something that they could take in on as a project.
I'd also encourage maybe reaching out to like Refuge Lowell and a couple of these other organizations that are working with youth in the community and, and art. Thank you.
Any other comments? Council Yen?
Just a quick comment, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. The, the barrel is not enough throughout, particularly in the North Common where children are playing balls and basketball. We only have one or two and it's not being emptied regularly, so overflow. So I would, I know we, the city allocate some money to upgrade the North Common Park, but while we're waiting, if I could maybe request for two or three more barrels. And also on top of that, that they are being emptied regularly because the youngster playing basketball and softball field and they need to put that somewhere. So we need to kind of keep it clean. Thank you.
No other comments? All in favor say aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it, motions carry. The next motion is 5.12. A motion by Council Janess request City Manager provide update on Hamilton Canal Development Projects, including city-held parcels as well as parcels that have been sold to private developers. Seconded by Council Yen. Council Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, so I'm just kind of wondering where we're at with some of the projects that have, have been kicked off over there. You know, we, we did move some of these parcels to, to a developer. So far, we've, we've got 75% of a garage and that's about it. And the other parcels, doesn't seem like anything's happening. I know there was a date in the agreement by which some projects would start, and I believe we're past that date. So I don't know what that means for these contracts. I don't know what the expected end time is for the, for the completion of that garage, but that construction is, is causing some issues in the neighborhood. You and I talked about that last week. So, you know, people are wondering when that's going to be completed, what's next and what's happening. The other thing I'd like to bring up as part of this discussion is, you know, we've talked about the ICC a lot and what's going to happen with that. I'm wondering if we might have an opportunity here, if, if these discussions in this, this unknown presents a bit of an opportunity, whether it may be an opportunity here for DPD to maybe put an RFP together to see if anybody would be interested in developing a small mid-sized hotel, you know, instead of the 250 rooms at the ICC, something, I don't know what the number is, 75, 100, somewhere in that neighborhood, with some convention space in it. Maybe one of those parcels that we still control or that we sold would be appropriate for something like that. Maybe there would be interest. Maybe that would drive utilization of, of the parking garage that's there. It's a nice centrally located spot. It's, you know, it would be local to all the events we have downtown, whether they're, you know, Sangus Center is three blocks away, the LMA is four blocks away, and everything in between is right there. So I don't know if this is something that we could possibly move on. Obviously, it's not going to get built in a day, but it, it's an opportunity to look at something and to eliminate a single point of failure that, that one hotel really is in the downtown. So if this is something that we might be able to work with and at least see if there's interest, you know, we don't have to necessarily do it or commit to it, but I think it, you know, it's an opportunity to open our eyes and see, see what's out there. Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. Councilors, we were anticipating having an informational on October 3rd, which is the following, two Tuesdays from today, to run down what has been going on and, you know, maybe at some point in time, have a potential session about what the future will hold. So there is a lot of activity going on, so I would, instead of the informational, I'll just be reporting back, if that's okay, in regards to what is happening with the garage, what is happening with the other two parcels, as well as what is left, if you would, from the parcels remaining. So if that's okay, we'll, we'll change that informational into a motion response to, to your, your thoughts, Councilor. And I'm, I'm pretty confident, Assistant City Manager, that we could have that for Tuesday, October 3rd. Great.
Your say, Council Janess? Council Yen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I may, on a motion response, Mr. Manager, to add the land disposition agreement, I know before my time, so it will be helpful to, to have a copy of the land disposition between the City of Lowell and developer, the Lupoli Companies LLC. Yeah, thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it, motions carry. The last motion, actually, because we took the follow-up motion up earlier on the meeting, the last motion is 5.13. Council Janess request City Manager have proper department prepare a report detailing all garage payment equipment outages for the past 12 months, including date of failure, cause, length of outage, resolution and approximate lost revenue? Seconded by Council Leahy. Council Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This has come from discussion with, with some of my neighbors who have gotten frustrated by the Roy Garage and the systems there. There have been many, many occasions where the gates are just left up, the exit gates, due to various failures and connectivity issues in the garage. And, you know, these, a lot of these were the same people that, that came out to speak against the proposed garage rate increase. This feeling that, that the monthly payers were, were shouldering the lion's share of the burden in terms of the, the increase. And that was only, that gets reinforced every time they see these gates up and people just driving out. And that's, you know, revenue that the city's missing out on. So really just trying to figure out how much money we've, we've lost with this, what we can do to prevent it going forward and how to really kind of square that with, with the, you know, rate increase that we're still talking about. Thank you.
No other comments? All in favor say aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it, motions carry. And that completes the special meeting for tonight. Any announcement? Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. Council, uh, councilors, I hope that you've had an opportunity to look at the Buska Series we have starting in the Downtown 2023. Once again, this is the leadership of this council offering music Thursdays and Fridays from 5 to 7 over at Derby Park on Middle Street, as well as Merrimack Street, Middle and Palmer Street. I know that you, everyone received an email on this, but if you did not, please let me know if you could help us by sharing that through any type of social media. But once again, it's just that opportunity to, to invigorate the downtown along the, the Palmer and Middle Street areas. And that's with music and just letting you know that that's happening. So thank you very much for those ideas. And thank you very much to the team up here, led by Ms. DeRosa's, as well as the crew down in K's for making that happen. So. Oh, sorry. Thank you very much. And we also have, we brought in Anthem, I believe is the name of the company. And hopefully everyone has noticed that we're going to be having a beer garden with music as well as games and everything else over at the Karawak Park, which is located on Bridge Street. That is just another idea to try, that came from here, came from this council, trying to reinvigorate and bring people into the downtown. We have a lot of different ideas on that and we're going to see how this stuff works. So thank you all very much for that.
Any other announcements? Hearing none, in a motion to adjourn by Council Scott, seconded by Council Drinkwater. All in favor say aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it, motion is adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for watching the meeting tonight. Have a wonderful evening. Bye-bye.